At this time, let me call the meeting to order and we'll start this morning with the prayer and pledges. We are joined here today and honored by Bishop Michael Pfeifer of the Catholic Diocese of San Angelo and he'll lead us in prayer.
Good morning, buenos dias. And let us pray. And let us begin with a moment of silence remembering that we're in the presence of an all-loving, all-wise, all-powerful God who is our Creator and our Father. Heavenly Father, as your children, with Jesus, we praise you, we bless you, we thank you for the constant beautiful gifts you shower upon us, spiritual material, and for the greatest gift of your own Son. You give us the privilege and responsibility of being your coworkers in building a better world of peace, justice, and truth. Guide the minds and hearts of your servants, our mayor and council, with the light of the Holy Spirit as they deliberate what is best for all the citizens of our community. Bless all the people of our community, especially the poor and needy, and all of our children, protect our schoolchildren. In the Spirit of Labor Day, we pray for all labors and for all the unemployed that they will find a job. Father, bring peace to our troubled world, especially in Syria. And Father, we continue to pray that you will pour out your heavenly reign upon us. Bless our United Way campaign with generosity and with success. And may we realize we are most like you when we love one another as Jesus teaches us. Amen.
He's the son of Stephen Graefah, who's our Park Facilities Crew Leader, and he's a fifth grader at Bowie Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Great job.
A clear, loud voice and right out front, so perfect. We have three proclamations this morning. The first one, I would like to be joined by representatives from the United Way. I got glasses down there, they're both here, okay. I'm joined today by Patty Bright Rider, the President and CEO of the United Way of the Concho Valley, and Donna Brosh, the Campaign Director, and by Bishop Michael Pfeifer of the Catholic Diocese of San Angelo. The proclamation. Whereas the United Way of the Concho Valley's mission is to increase the organized capacity of people to care for one another, and whereas the United Way of the Concho Valley has shown great initiative and enhanced the quality of life in the Concho Valley, and whereas the United Way of the Concho Valley works tirelessly to increase awareness of the needs of people in this community and strives to assist them through the services of its 17 member agencies that provide 17 programs. Now therefore, I Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby declare Sunday, September 16th, 2012, as a day of community prayer for the success of this year's United Way campaign in the Concho Valley, and urge all citizens to participate in this extraordinary humanitarian effort.
We greatly appreciate that the bishop does this for the United Way every year. And on behalf of the United Way, I always think that with the support of this community and a little help from above, we'll have a successful campaign.
Things always go better with God. We have good workers for the United Way and, as I put in our prayer today, we're asking God's blessing upon this beautiful effort that helps so many, many thousands of people in our community. So we ask God's blessing upon this beautiful work and we thank you, Mayor and your council, for this proclamation. We work as if everything depends on us, but pray because we know everything depends on God. So thank you very much for this proclamation and we encourage all of our people to join us on that prayer day for the success and generosity of our campaign. And we thank these wonderful leaders of our United Way. Thank you.
My second proclamation, or our second proclamation today, is for the United Way of the Concho Valley's Children's Day. It's September 15th, 2012. The proclamation. Whereas the United Way of the Concho Valley's mission is to increase the organized capacity of people to care for one another, and whereas the United Way of the Concho Valley believes that children hold a special place in our lives and that raising healthy, happy children is the greatest accomplishment any community can hope to achieve, and whereas the United Way of the Concho Valley invokes all of the citizens of San Angelo to commit to ensuring that every child grows up in a safe and nurturing environment inclusive of opportunity, love, and laughter. Now therefore, I Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby declare Saturday, September 15th, 2012, as United Way of the Concho Valley's Children's Day, and urge all citizens to participate in this celebration
On behalf of United Way, we appreciate Mayor New and the City Council doing this for the United Way, having the proclamation for Children's Day, and that will be our campaign kickoff, and we want everyone to come out and bring the children because they are the next generation. And if we do a good job with those, and this will stay the great community that it is to live and work and to raise our families. So we appreciate you so much and we invite all the community to come out for the Children's Parade on September 15th at Kirby Park. Thank you.
We have a proclamation this morning for Constitution Week, September 17th through the 24th, 2012, and it's to be accepted today by Shirley Dobson from the Texas Society Daughters of the American Revolution. She's our District 10 Director. The proclamation. Whereas our founders, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America, and whereas it is of the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to support, preserve, and defend it against all enemies, and whereas the 225th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution provides an historic opportunity for all Americans to remember the achievements of our framers of the Constitution and the rights, privileges, and responsibilities they afforded us in this unique document, and whereas the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week, September 17th through the 24th, as designated by proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with Public Law 915. Now therefore, I Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 24th, 2012, as Constitution Week in the City of San Angelo, Texas, and urge all our citizens to reflect during that week on the many benefits of our federal Constitution and the privileges and responsibilities of American citizenship.
Thank you very much for being here this morning and being able to join in with me for this exciting opportunity. I know I've accepted the proclamation a couple of years in a row, and that's been as a member of the Pocahontas Chapter, but this year I'm in a new position. I'm still a member of Pocahontas Chapter and we still do a lot of things throughout the community. You might want to listen for radio blurbs about Constitution Week. There'll be some little quizzes. You're not going to win a prize, I'm sorry. The only prize you're going to win is the fact that you know the answer. And there's going to be some things in the newspaper too. So I just appreciate the city coming out, I appreciate the people that, and the surrounding areas, and I'm just so grateful for all of our ancestors that we had, that they provided for us even as long ago as they did. And I'm proud of the Huntleys.
The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. Do I have any desires from council?
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from item number three, so however you want to deal with that.
One, two, three, four. This is a quorum without you, Mr. Hurstfeld. How about if you just recuse yourself?
That'd be fine.
Okay. Is there public comment at this time?
Good morning, council, mayor, and staff, general lady. I've been told and I have seen, sir...
Mr. C., you're out of practice. You need to go ahead and say your name.
Oh, yes. Oh, I'm very sorry. My name is Jerry C. and I'm a member of WTS. And I appreciate the opportunity even being here today. There's something that came to my attention, that some people brought me some letters concerning this water and sewer line insurance. There's letters just being sent out to people in Blackshear asking them to participate. And I understand, just, excuse me, just today, that there can be scams involved in this, you know, and that other cities have had these problems. You know San Angelo is a very old place, it's a very nice place, and it's even getting better, it's getting bigger, you know, can't even jaywalk anymore. But we need to take, we need to take a serious look at that proposal that Ms. Grimes had brought up, I saw that on TV, because in order to prevent some of our citizens from being scammed, I think the city should really be aware of what's going on and make their own proposals and have some kind of, something involved in it to make sure that our citizens aren't scammed. But this is a very good program, and it's good for all the citizens of San Angelo, especially those like me and others that don't have money to shell out $2,000 or $3,000 if something happens. And usually those things happen on a holiday, Christmas, that type of thing with a lot of family over and usage, over-usage. You have those emergencies. People are poor or moderate income, they can't afford to pay $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 for somebody to come out and repair a sewer line or a water line from the service point to their house. They can't afford it. And you have a lot of, you have a lot of people that's buying medicines that's costing them as much as a rent is a month. They certainly can't afford it. And on a holiday, prices are doubled. And with this insurance, they can call and somebody come out and repair their service because they've been stacking up a little bit of change every month so to guarantee this. And this is absolutely necessary for the people that's in the lower range of our economy. We need, we really need this, and if we're going to be concerned with everybody, you know, San Angelo had a vision back here a few years ago, and that's all-inclusive government and to revitalize the city. And if you, some of you that haven't seen on the other side of town, this is happening already. And it's in an older section of town where there's older plumbing, and you have new houses and older plumbing and more things going in on that system, it's going to tax that system. And we need some kind of guarantees. As our city grows, our areas grow, and our plumbing needs to be redone. It really does, because it's very old and it's brittle and it can't take that pressure. Now to take some of the relief off the elderly and poor people at this time, that would be a pretty good program to help everybody. And I think you should really consider this and get involved with this and find out from other cities what the scams were and all of this so that you can make an informed decision and help some of the people that's on the lower economic scale. I certainly appreciate all of you because you've done a wonderful job. San Angelo is growing. I invite you to go out to Blackshear area and see what's been done out there lately. I think you're going to be surprised. It's because of all of you, everybody here, because of all of you, you have that vision. And now you can start to see this vision working. And I thank you very much, and I thank God for all of you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Other public, other public comment at this time? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item three and item seven.
Okay, you'd like to move those?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Call for the vote then, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda with the removal of three and seven to the regular agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number three.
I'll make a motion to approve item three of the consent.
Okay, and Ms. Farmer, question? I have a second.
Consideration of authorizing sale of property located at 2202 Joy Road. I'll second the motion to approve.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further consideration? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seven.
With reference to number seven, I simply pulled it because...
Ms., I'm sorry, madam. You know, at this point, Mr. Hurstfeld is recused and has not rejoined the meeting. It's item number seven, it is post anything that would interfere, he would have any possible conflict with, so he would be rejoining the council at this time. Okay? Item number seven, consideration of appointing a council, no.
No, that's, that's what I was trying to say, it's because Mr. Hurstfeld is involved, that's the reason I pulled it.
So I guess she pulled that because she's much more insightful than I am. So number seven, we'll vote on, and then Mr. Hurstfeld can rejoin us. This is consideration of appointing Councilmember Hurstfeld as a city representative to the Concho Water Master Advisory Committee.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number seven. Call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this time then, Mr. Hurstfeld, please, please join us. We will move forward then with item number nine on the regular agenda. This is consideration of matters related to the naming of a private drive within the City of San Angelo. It's the first public hearing in consideration of an introduction of an ordinance repealing in its entirety another ordinance and naming a drive, Time Clock Drive is that drive? And providing an effective date.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to put a flash drive in here, apparently the presentation didn't make it on to the...
Okay. Folks, there's a part A and a part B, so we'll listen and either take that into account when a motion is made and make the motion for both parts, or we'll take them individually in pieces depending on what the data shows us, okay?
This is a request by Data Management Systems Incorporated, a San Antonio, a San Angelo company that is expanding their operations here. They have purchased the old Sitel building on Loop 306 and are consolidating their operations in that building. In 2005, they made a request of City Council to name a private drive, Time Clock Drive. This is an aerial showing of the location and also a street level view. That request was approved, no signs were ever put up marking the street or naming the street, no addresses were ever assigned on that street, and they in fact never moved into the building because they grew so rapidly that they outgrew that building before they ever had the opportunity to move into it. So the first part of the request today is to repeal the ordinance which named that private street as Time Clock Drive. Second part is, they have now purchased the Sitel building located on the other side of Loop 306. They have, they're asking that we allow them to assign the name Time Clock Drive to a private drive through that property. And they will then address their, their company mailing address will be basically probably one Time Clock Drive. They're doing this for marketing reasons. I'm afraid I have to defer to them on the effectiveness of it. I did look up one other instance. Johnson &amp; Johnson headquarters are at One Johnson &amp; Johnson Plaza, so presumably that marketing scheme does have some amount of effectiveness. Also, you may have noticed in the paper this weekend, Time Clock Plus is entering into a partnership with a Canadian company to combine products whereby their time, their automated time clock product that they provide here will be combined with an automated entry product by the Canadian firm, thus giving us a little farther-reaching economic impact. The applicants are here, if there are any questions.
Okay. How is it that we get involved in naming a private drive?
It's basically the only procedure to be able to do that. It has to come through council.
They can't just stick up a sign and say, "I hereby claim this road as my road," since they own it.
The post office wouldn't address off of that without some official.
Got it.
Bob, is there a, is there a name to that part of the road now?
No, sir, there isn't.
There's no name?
No, sir.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve this, I mean, considering the introduction or repealing of his entirety ordinance. The wording that's there now, I'll make a motion for part A, I guess. Are we still on part A? Or did you include...
Well, you could make a, you could do both. You could say, "I want to repeal as provided in part A and add Time Clock Drive in its new location as provided in part B."
Exactly.
Second.
Can you get that?
I have a question. I'm very familiar with the location, the traffic. Being that close to the entrance ramp to 306, as you come just past the credit union, I mean, right, I mean, right there where that drive is coming out is the entrance to get onto the loop. Have we, did we study, did we consider, and where has Clinton asked my questions of, about the traffic? Because that particular section, the traffic already backs up all the way to College Hills with people trying to get on the loop, and then on the reverse side, Wildwood, the cut through to come around, come down Forest Trail, the traffic is pretty intense and pretty heavy, and I just would like to know if that was considered and what effect it has either way, and Clinton just walked in.
I won't speak for Clinton, but I don't believe that that was looked at for this proposal, it being an existing driveway. And it's also beyond what's called the Gore Point, which is the point where traffic begins to enter the ramp.
Would it be any different than when Sitel was there, as far as traffic, I wonder?
It was, I mean, I lived right there, and I don't have a problem with it, other than my concern is traffic. It stacks up and backs up pretty heavy at College Hills and the loop, and it can extend all the way back to College Hills when people are turning to get into Sitel, or they'll use the Wildwood entrance to get in and they'll come out toward the loop.
I'm reading this carefully, but I'm not sure we're on topic. And so I think it's a good topic. I mean, I think that part's fine, but as I read this, I think all we're doing is naming it. We're not deciding whether that...
The recommendation from staff to name it, I just want to know if they considered traffic.
Right, that's fair. Question, is there a staff person that wants to answer that question? I heard Mr. Sneeman say no, because it was past the, past the entrance point and that he, they didn't consider it an issue.
We didn't see that as, the staff didn't see it as relevant to this proposal, so...
Okay.
Clinton Bailey, I believe, is here though.
Right, they entertain the issue of the naming, not, not location of the drive.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It's cause and effect.
I have a, I have a motion and a second. Do I have public input on this item? Yes, sir.
Morning, Mayor, council, chief, Dunn, fire. I know fire and public safety dispatch had some concerns over the naming of these private streets. This is, we've had several of these over the last few months, and it creates a lot of issues as far as responses to us when you have these different entities changing the names of streets and naming short little streets, especially for response into dispatch. They have to get all that information correct, and then, you know, what happens if this thing goes out of business in a year? The next business comes in and wants to rename it, and you have a different street name there, and it's not so much their deal, it's just this policy in general of changing these names and creating all these different little instances that makes it very difficult in the public safety arena.
I understand that, and I've kind of got the same concern, but really with Public Street. The file on the street...
Same issue there, councilman.
I should be able to paint that baby pink if I want. It's my opinion.
Same issue there.
Well, Brian, how do you respond to if there was an incident there? The street has no name now, so how is that...
But they're addressed either off Wildwood or the...
The loop.
The loop. So the same as all the rest of them there. You're going to give one entity a address off one particular deal there, and this, basically what you're opening the door to private businesses...
But with something like that, couldn't you request that they remain as a 911 address off...
If they did that, that would result... If they did that, that would resolve, I believe, any issues for public safety if they had their drive and their address.
Why don't we ask them if they would be willing to just keep their 911 address as 306? And that way your police and fire happen.
I do not know what that does for the post office or any other things, but as far as coming up in dispatch and what we would respond to, I think that would clear issues for us.
All that would change is their 911. Their mailing address and everything they could still keep as their private drive.
The applicants here can respond to that. I would point out though that, for example, with the previous private drive, it shows up on the GIS as that street name. So it would show up on 911 also as that street name. And I think the applicant has agreed to put up a conventional street sign at each end of the street marking that street. We don't have, in San Angelo, we don't have an ordinance at this time that differentiates signage between private and public streets. But they have agreed that they would put up a street sign at each end to mark that street.
Okay. Mr. Hirschfeld, are you looking for an answer to your question?
I don't really care.
Okay.
I know my answer.
Okay. Okay. I, do I have other public input on this item? All right. I have a motion and a second to repeal the old street that never was actually put into play and to add the new street. So at this point, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move to item number 10. This is the first public hearing in consideration of introduction of an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of public right of way for Smith Boulevard extending approximately 1,000 feet northward from the intersection of Smith Boulevard and McGill Boulevard in northeastern San Angelo. Presentation by our planning manager, A.J. Favre.
We've got a number of items on the agenda this morning, so in the interest of time, because I know we have a short meeting, I will try to move fairly quickly through these, but feel free to stop me as you have concerns about these cases. On this first case, this should be somewhat familiar to you regarding the abandonment of Smith Boulevard. We've had some lengthy discussions with you, the MPO Policy Board, the Planning Commission, Howard College, and several other entities regarding the campus plan for Howard, which is later on in today's agenda, as well as the issue of Smith Boulevard extending northward through the existing campus. And so this item will take care of that plan for Smith Boulevard. As you might recall, we have amended and updated the thoroughfare plan for the city, eliminating the stretch of Smith in that plan. And so today, what we'll be doing is formalizing the abandonment of this stretch of Smith Boulevard and allowing it to then, as following state procedures, let both halves of that street go to the adjacent property owners, in this case Howard College, for inclusion in their campus expansion. We sent out nine notifications on this request. We had one that was returned in favor to us from the applicant. This is the stretch of Smith Boulevard that is the subject of today's discussion. This extends northeast from McGill Boulevard. And again, you'll notice that it is not the entire segment of Smith, and we'll look at the campus plan here in a moment. But as you might recall, the plans are for an extension of Paulan Boulevard to be built northwest from Highway 277, and then for some segment of Smith Boulevard to be improved and extend southward to the boundaries of the college. The area that is.
A.J., let me stop you real quick, before I forget. One in opposition, but no.
No, no, one in favor.
One in favor, but no oppositions, okay.
Correct. So again, this crosshatched area is the remainder of Smith Boulevard that is completely within the boundaries of the Howard ownership tracks and the campus. Here's an aerial view, again, this area is not developed as of yet, but you can see the campus as it exists today to the southeast of the segment of Smith Boulevard. And here's just a few pictures, I'll flip through very quickly to keep us moving. This is looking north from McGill at that street. This is looking eastward from McGill towards 67, and this is looking west from Smith Boulevard towards the property. The subject of this area in the photograph is again a segment of Smith Boulevard to be abandoned, and behind that, the open vacant area that is part of the area for expansion. City staff does recommend approving the proposed street abandonment. We do have some conditions that we outlined in your staff report. Those conditions relate to requests for easement that is being requested and required by the Fire Marshal's Office, a site utility plan to be proposed and put together for our water utility staff, and lastly, removable bollards. I think this is better explained if I go back to the photograph with the aerial view, so let me go back to this and show you exactly what that would look like. So again, what we're saying is that 20 feet of this area in the crosshatch would be reserved as an easement for strictly emergency vehicle access only. The concern we have, and that the Fire Marshal has expressed to us, is again, being able to enforce and protect all of the proposed buildings. Now, the greater master plan for this campus does show a fully improved fire lane that would lay around the edges of the campus. Once that is put into place, this easement will then revert back to the property owner. So again, this is a temporary measure put in place to be able to expand the ability for fire emergency personnel to protect the buildings as they continue to be built to the west and cross the Smith Boulevard. Once again, once that fire lane that's fully improved is put into place, this easement would revert back to the property owner. The other part of that condition that was deemed important was a requirement for removable bollards to be put in place, and that is to, again, as the campus continues to expand, prevent students and other vehicular traffic from using this segment of Smith Boulevard in the way that we all agreed, we simply didn't want it to be used. So that is the reason behind those two conditions. And then of course, the utility plan as they move forward with their construction. That's a very brief overview. I'd be happy to delve into any more of that as you'd like.
Question, Mr. Morrison?
Howard College, are y'all happy with this? Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve is presented. Do I have further questions from council?
I have, let me just, I'm sorry.
A.J., point again the 20 feet you talked about, and then where the bollards are.
We're not specifying where they place that 20-foot easement. This right of way as it exists today is 80 feet, so it's much larger than what we actually need. So we're allowing them the flexibility of placing that 20 feet wherever it's most convenient for their development.
Okay. Mr. Hirschfeld?
You've got it written in the ordinance that it will automatically, that this easement will automatically be canceled.
Once the full fire lane is established, this easement will no longer be necessary.
Okay, so we're going to have an easement going out into the middle of nowhere.
Essentially, it will connect to this portion of Smith Boulevard that will be constructed as part of that discussion with CoStateDC and allow personnel and emergency vehicle access from the north portion of Smith Boulevard through the campus so that they can reach the buildings that will be placed here and here. That's the only access to those buildings at this time until that full-blown fire lane is completed, and that's part of the latter portion of the phased approach to this construction.
Other questions? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve this as submitted. Is there public input on this item? Okay, call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 11. This is the first public hearing in consideration of introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Exhibit A of the zoning ordinance of the Code of Ordinances City of San Angelo, again relating to the Howard College campus. Presentation by Planning Manager, A.J. Favre.
Thank you, yes, this is the second part, the second piece, if you will, of this Howard campus expansion. We sent out 29 notifications in reference to this request, and we received one in favor, zero in opposition. I'll begin by just showing some photos of the area. Here's the map of the area. Everything that is crosshatched would be the subject of this planned development district. So again, that encompasses to the southeast of Smith Boulevard, the current campus, as well as the proposed expansion for campus, which I'll show you the plan of in just a moment, to the northwest of Smith. The vision plan for this area does call for an industrial, I'm sorry, institutional use in the blue where the campus currently exists, as well as commercial use to the northwest. And here's some photographs, again, I'll flip through these very quickly. This is looking at the front of the campus as it exists today, looking northwest at the parking lot that is accessory to that area. And then this is looking northward at the area for expansion. Again, it's completely vacant at this time. This is looking east from that expansion area, at the vacant property around that, some of which is zoned commercial. And then this is looking the opposite direction, westward along that campus expansion area. Again, largely vacant, although you can see in the background to the left of the photograph, the neighborhood that is in place in that location. What I'll start by doing, rather than digging into this very lengthy ordinance, is just to let you know that this is exactly the same as the previous proposal that we brought you back in May. There are three changes to this that make it somewhat different from that proposal. The first is a condition that was written into the ordinance, that there should be no obstructive fencing around or through the traffic circle which is now planned. That's on the campus plan that I'll show you in a moment that has been updated. Again, that traffic circle is where Smith Boulevard that we are building to the campus edge would terminate and then enter into internal parking. The second change, of course, is that Smith Boulevard would not be extending northward through the campus. And then the third change is the concept plan that's been revised to reflect the new layout that we all worked with you on and worked with Howard College on, showing the main entrances for Howard College to remain along 277 as it is today. And the second main entrance coming in from the north from Paulan Boulevard, as you might recall from the beginning, that was intended to be along the south from McGill Boulevard. So that change has also been made. Other than that, the ordinance is exactly the same as we presented it to you in May. We can delve into it if you have specific questions. This is the revised plan that will be part of this ordinance. Again, I call your attention to the area of change, which is Smith Boulevard extending southward to the edge of the campus, terminating in the traffic circle that I mentioned a moment ago, which funnels traffic into an internal parking network. There is the ability to enter south on the McGill side, although it is not set up as the main entrance for the campus. And then of course, you always have the two entrances along the eastern side, along Highway 277. Before I get any further into the ordinance, I'll ask if there's any specific areas you have questions about, or if you'd like me to proceed.
Mr. Morrison?
Same question, Howard College. Is this all right with y'all? Then I'm going to make a motion to approve it as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Morrison, a second from Mr. Hirschfeld to approve this as presented. Further questions from Ms. Favre?
I thought we already voted on this.
We were voting in the pieces.
No, I mean, I thought we voted back in May.
You did, but we did not finalize that ordinance because you had some concerns about Smith Boulevard running through this, and so we pulled back all pieces of this campus expansion plan until the Smith Boulevard issue was resolved.
But they're not going to have to come back every time they want to change the layout of a building.
No, they're not.
Perfect.
Okay. Do I have public input on this item? Call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item, please.
Okay, the next item is Zone Change 1210 for GBT Realty. This is a request on which we sent 21 notifications out in reference to, and we received two of those in opposition of the request. Those were included in your background packet. Again, we're looking at the northwestern segment of the city. This is at the intersection of Glynnna and Howard Street. And here's a closer view of the property which is crosshatched. It's currently zoned RS2. And again, this request is to rezone that to a neighborhood commercial zoning district for a retail use. Here's an aerial photograph of the area, although the aerial is from 2009, it still relatively reflects what is in and around the area. To the west and to the south, you can see a large residential neighborhood that's been in place as far back as 1954 and has consistently been zoned as single-family residential since that time. We have a church that is just catty-corner from this facility. And then to the direct north-northwest of this facility, this is all federal land. It is open, open space, and is likely intended to always function as open space. As you may know, Edmund Boulevard does change names as you continue to go to the west, southwest. It becomes Glynnna. Further to the east, it's Edmund, and further east of that is 29th Street. This is the vision plan map of the area. It does call for this entire area to remain neighborhood, which is again, low family residential, low density. We also have the area that is encompassed in green, which is the federal facility land, that is again called for to be open space in perpetuity. Because this area is so difficult to see in a closer view, we have also given you a bird's eye view of the zoning and the vision map in this area. This is another excerpt from the vision map. One of the things I'll draw to your attention here is you can see that further to the east, there are specific areas called for commercial. To the south along Howard, we do have a number of neighborhood intersections where we call for neighborhood commercial. These are nodes of commercial, as you see, and as you're used to us discussing, particularly most recently in the discussion of the fire station rezoning. Here is a bird's eye view of the actual zoning in this area. Again, mostly the pale yellow, which is the single-family residential, although again, there are opportunities for commercial use as there are already established commercial nodes running south along Howard. As you go further along to the southwest along Glynnna, there's a large commercial corridor. And then also to the east and far south, there are also opportunities for commercial development. This map shows the two letters in opposition to this request and where those property owners own property, and they are both immediately adjacent to the site, one across the alley, one directly across Howard Street. Just a few photographs, this is looking north from that subject property at the federal land that I pointed out on the map just a moment ago. And here is the church that I referenced. It's important to note that this neighborhood that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation actually continues back behind this church and opens up into another swath of residential zoning. So it is one of the two most large, two largest, rather, residential areas in the city. This is looking east from the subject property at that neighborhood. This is looking across Howard Street. And this is looking south from Glynnna at the subject property, which would appear in the foreground, the background, of course, being that line of houses that opens that neighborhood. One of the letters in opposition, again, was just across this alleyway. And then that lastly, this is looking west from the subject property at Glynnna as Glynnna continues around to connect with Loop 306. Again, the immediate vicinity around this area is largely single-family residential, although the subject tract is currently zoned 42 family residential. It is the only RS2 district in this immediate area. Again, the predominant zoning in the area has existed since 1954, so it's a very established residential enclave. In your background report, we pointed out some of the excerpts from the comprehensive plan, which talk about the importance of transitions that are appropriate between commercial and residential uses and the need of buffers to help cushion those transitions. Our basis for recommendation in looking at this request, it is inconsistent with the vision plan map for the area, which again calls for residential. This is a commercial type of use, which would not be consistent with that type of usage. We also have had discussions in the past regarding spot zoning, and that would be another opportunity to talk about that in this particular request, as it is, again, beneficial of a single parcel without taking account the comprehensive plan and vision plan map for the area. We also pointed out to you in your background report that our ordinance requires that we zone compatibly with our plans and policies. And again, our plan for this area calls for that to be and remain residential. And we can answer some more questions about spot zoning if we have time, or if you need us to get into that. So in short, we took the analysis and the criteria that are laid out in the ordinance and compared each of those to this request and found that in all areas it was incompatible with the intent of the zoning ordinance, our comprehensive plan, our vision plan map, the existing neighborhood, et cetera. There are already many opportunities for neighborhood commercial usage in and around the area. And then of course, we always have the concern, and I think that was reflected in the two letters of opposition, about the types of effects that it would have on the neighborhood in terms of practicality, traffic, trash. Those were the things that the residents were primarily concerned about. It is important to look at the zoning history at this location. This has been a very, very divisive property. There have been a number of requests for zoning on this property in the past that have been denied and resulted in great community input. Three denials that we've listed and talked about in our background report are, number one, there was a request for rezoning for apartments to be placed on this property. There was a request for a gas station. Yes, sir.
So apartments would be more intensive, it was two, two-family? So it's kind of zoned for duplexes or something like that?
Correct. So apartments is actually more intensive than what would be put there, although it is less intensive than what today's request is for. Gas station is another type of commercial that was proposed at this property. And then an auto repair shop was proposed to block south of here. And all three of those items were denied by the city council, and we had a large amount of public input, more than we did in this particular case, but it was a very, very divisive, again, type of discussion about what should happen at this intersection, so keep that in mind. Planning staff does recommend denial of the request for many reasons that we've. Planning staff does recommend denial of the request for many reasons that we've outlined in the presentation, but have gone more into detail about in your staff report. The planning commission did recently hear this request at their most recent meeting. They recommended approval of the request by a vote of three to one. We had only four members in attendance at that meeting. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the request.
Are we, walk me through what we're, I know it's across the street, but I think it-
Can you go back to the map?
Sure.
It's across the street, but it speaks to the spot zoning that you're talking about. Isn't the church supposed to be zoned differently than residential?
Churches are, since 2000, allowed in residential districts by terms of a conditional use. There is an excerpt of the zoning ordinance that states that if such a use was in place in 2000, it is since granted a conditional use. So it is a lawful use as of 2000.
Well, I thought it was lawful. I'm just wondering about, when you talk about spot zoning, if we're talking about that area, shouldn't we be talking about changing that church consistently with what we did with Glenn Meadows and others? That's why I'm, I'm just wondering why it's not part of this discussion if we're talking about zoning in that area.
Which map specifically, Mr. Hirschfield?
Back to the one, back, you were close.
The yellow?
Yep, the yellow. One more. Okay, what's the pink represent?
That is neighborhood commercial, which is what is asked for today in this request. These are areas that are already zoned.
Let me just make sure that I understand this. We're looking at denying them the ability to put a Dollar General, Dollar General, correct? That's what I read.
I believe that's correct.
A Dollar General on the corner of Howard and-
Here.
Edmund, I guess that would be Edmund Junius, right there in that area. However, they could go down to the old Pick 'n Pack down there on Greenwood and Howard and build one right there, right in the middle of all the neighborhood housing. Am I correct?
Correct, because the zoning is currently allowing for that.
Now, personally, I think this location is by far better suited for traffic to have that as opposed to right there. Is that a fair assessment?
I don't think it is, simply because, again, we have a plan to follow, and there's no point in having a plan if we overrule it every time we use our own personal judgment.
But you didn't answer my question.
No, I disagree with you.
You do.
Yes. Again, we have in our comprehensive plan called for nodes at very specific intersections. This intersection is not one of those.
But Greenwood is-
There were reasons, I'm sorry?
Greenwood Street down there?
Well, again, it's already zoned for that. Regardless of what we are looking for in the future, here's the actual zoning of that property. It currently exists today. So when the comprehensive plan was done in 2009, one of the directives that the council gave staff was to try to not create non-conformities. If there are already commercial areas existing, then let's continue to treat them as commercial. So regardless of whether that is something that planning principles would lead us to, because there were already commercial zoning pockets in this area, we were told to go ahead and keep those in order to eliminate non-conformities. I don't think that we would reach those same conclusions today, but again, the preference was given to us, and we acted accordingly in drawing this plan.
Got it.
Based upon, based upon our vision plan and the input of the citizens in that area and what the intended purpose for the property use would be, taking into consideration the amount of traffic on that particular street, especially on the weekends when there are soccer games going on, I don't, I can't agree with that, I can't agree with the zoning change, and so I'd like to make a motion to deny.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion to deny item 12 as presented and to deny the zoning change request. Is there further question or comment from council?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
And I am, this is in my district, and I am very familiar with this area. And I noticed that Wayne Maxwell and his wife were in favor of it, so I apologize to them. But this is not a good fit for this area. There is so much traffic on this portion of Edmund Boulevard and its two lanes. There's no parking. It's, this is not a good mix at all for this area, and I'm with Fred on this. This needs to be denied.
Other input from council? Mr. Silvas?
AJ, I guess the only question I had was, you know, on the notifications, the two that were in opposition, what, what were they? What were they opposing? What were their reasoning? I never saw it.
One of the notifications in opposition left the comments that they did not need or want a business on this busy corner. Years ago, the owner tried several times for a zone change. They're referring to the gas station and the apartment cases that I mentioned earlier. The uses were turned down every time. Finally, finally to pacify is what this says, the zoning board changed it to a two-family residential, and the owner was told not to request another change. And so that was their rationale, was that the two-family residential was as intensive as they wanted to see.
Till death do us part.
The other letter in opposition says, somewhat difficult to read, but it says, "I'm against any type of business at this location. The traffic is already terrible." I can't make out the next sentence.
And that's, that's okay.
It says they've talked to several people, and they agree that they do not, not want to see anything happen at that location that would be intensive. And I'm afraid that's all I can read of it.
You know, when I first read this, the first thing I thought about was traffic. I mean, they just, do you have any idea what the traffic count along there is?
I don't. I don't know if Mr. Bailey-
You don't, you don't have to look it up, but I'm just, I'm guessing in the, you know, 20,000, 30,000, I would imagine, but not that much.
That's Knickerbocker Road. 26,000 is Knickerbocker Road. So it's gonna be a lot of-
Anyway, there's a lot of traffic, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Farmer?
It's okay. People make that mistake.
Well, I thought he, I thought he was asking for, I thought he was asking, exactly.
The, the location, there is a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic. But I'm all for, you know, a business and a Dollar General, you know, in the area, but doesn't Dollar General sell alcohol, wine and beer?
I don't know. I've never seen that in there, but-
I think they do. And I, it's just so close to the soccer fields and stuff, I'm kind of on the fence.
Okay.
I, I do have one concern. I mean, we're talking about denying this, but when we're talking about the concern is all the traffic, what else are they gonna do with this? This lot's been vacant for, oh, I don't know, at least-
Fifty years.
Fifty years. I mean, since I've been driving by, well, 47 since I've been driving by. But the likelihood that they're gonna build houses right there facing, on Junior Street?
Bingo.
I mean, what's the likelihood of that?
People wouldn't want to, they're gonna say, "I don't want to buy the house because of the traffic."
Right, so-
I don't necessarily disagree with you, but there's other types.
So I have the concern that I feel like we are hamstringing now. I mean, they had this lot probably, or this, you know, this whole development was out there before Junius and Edmund, you know, tied in back there behind the, by the dam. And I've just, I don't know what else they can do there, since they can't have anything commercial, they can't do anything of that magnitude, and the likelihood that people are gonna build a house there, I would say is relatively thin. I don't think that's right for the owners.
Okay. Well, I'm in agreement generally with your position. Is there other council input? Is there public input on this item? Okay, well, y'all come on up to the front so that one can speak and then the other can speak.
And may if I might, Ms. Farmer?
Dollar General did file for a petition to start selling alcohol.
Craig Myers, WTOS.
Yes, sir.
Several things that have come up. Not everybody makes good investments. If I buy a piece of property thinking that it's gonna be used in one way, there's no guarantee that I have to revamp the whole area around it to make sure that I'm successful. It's a lot harder to undo things than it is to do things. And with the neighborhood revitalization, we have found that we have this spot zoning all the way through and the city in Rio Vista, Blackshear. Who would have thought that a junkyard in a residential area would have caused anybody any trouble in the residential area? Well, it darn sure did. And some of us spent about 100 hours sweating building a fence that somebody else should have built because they allowed this in there. And as you look at the people I'm concerned about, or not the folks who are worrying about the traffic, the people along that alleyway that back up with their residences to what will bring people in who will throw trash over the chain-link fence, you know, that will blow into their yard, it will lower the property value of everybody along that southern or western perimeter. So I think that we're dealing with undoing a whole bunch of spot zoning that's occurred to protect the property rights of individuals, particularly in a commercial way. And while we want to encourage commercial stuff, there's no guarantee that you're gonna make money on buying some property that stays vacant a long time. There is a guarantee, if you put up a Dollar General that's gonna back up to that area, it's gonna cause a nuisance value that's gonna lower the property value of every house that adjoins it. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Yes, my name is Terry Cowan. I'm with John Cowan and Associates out of Tyler, and we're a land surveying company. And we are the spokesman, I guess you would say, for GPT Realty. We've surveyed 85 to 90 of the stores that they've built in Texas in the last three years. And you think, well, why someone from Tyler here in San Angelo? But they're in Nashville, Tennessee, and so it's easier for us to do it, and we're closer on the ground than, than they are. But I understand the concerns about the comprehensive plan. I understand concerns about spot zoning. I served on a planning and zoning commission back home, and I would argue that this is, this is on the edge of a district. It's not in the middle of a district. But I do understand those concerns. A lot of this was addressed at the, at the PENZI hearing. I was here two weeks ago for that. And the commission was, their concerns, there were, true, there were only four members there, but three of them, their concerns were addressed, and, and they felt like going ahead with recommending the, the zone change. I, I know that when you change, change zoning, it doesn't really matter what's going on that tract of land, because you're not, if you zone it commercial, then it could be commercial for anything. So I understand that. But let me tell you a little about this, what I know about this company, and I've had about three years working for them. They are not an investment company that buys and sells real estates and then turns it for profit in that way. They do one thing, they build Dollar Generals. And they do not buy the tract until they've got it all set in place where they can put a Dollar General. And then they have a set Dollar General design that they use, and it conforms with the particular codes of the municipality that they're building in. In my own town, we had a restriction that the building had to be 75% masonry. And so they, and they, they didn't like it, but they conformed with it. And before it was all over, where they bricked up the whole building, because if they were gonna do 75%, they might as well do 100%. So we have a, the Dollar General in our town is completely bricked up, and you don't see that often. I understand that. But I'm just saying that they, this is what they do. The, their design is like, say, the trash, for example. They have specific canisters, these huge things that all their trash goes in. And I have seen, like I say, 85 to 90 of these. All of them are behind walls. They'll either build a stone wall or a board wall, or some kind of wall that hides the, their dumpsters from public view. And so they're not just sitting out there with open trash exposed. I have seen the, I understand the traffic concerns. I've seen their plans for this site. There would be no access on to Glynnna. The access would be on to Howard. I don't know that, you all know the traffic problems there better than I do, but there would be no access on to that busy street. It would all be to the east. The building would face the east. It would face Howard Street. They plan to partially, in the design that I've seen, the alleyway will be partially paved. They will, it's just a gravel alley now, so their plans are to pave a good portion of that alleyway. You had mentioned about beer and wine sales. I've never seen beer and wine sold in a Dollar General. I don't think they do that. I'm, I, I've never seen it.
I have a, I have a answer to that. They did file for a TABC license in 2010 and 2011.
Did they?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, generally, it's not done. I just don't, I don't know what the specific situation is here. That would be a separate issue, obviously. But that's generally not what people go into a Dollar General to buy. It's usually household items, that sort of thing. And just generally speaking, I have seen the, these buildings built all across the state. And I would say that, that they, that the communities that they're in, the people, the neighbors appreciate having that store there. I know in my little town, we use it, you know, rather than going to the big store. It's so much more convenient just to go down the street to the Dollar General. And so neighbor, it's a neighborhood thing. And so I don't, I understand the concerns. I don't see as a detriment to the, to the neighborhood. And I'm just not, I don't know about the traffic concerns, and that's another issue which I can't address. But if there's any questions anyone would like to ask me, that's, that's basically all I had to say.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Any further public input on this item? Okay. I have a motion and a second to deny this as it is presented, so let me call for that vote. All those in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
And those that oppose denial, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, I think I'm hearing a four-three? Okay. The, the-
I'm sorry.
The ayes. The ayes. The ayes are Ms. Farmer.
I'm confused.
That's what you pay me for. The ayes are Ms. Farmer, Mr. Adams, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Silvas. The nays are Mr. Alexander, Mr. Hirschfield, and myself. Okay. Let's, okay. I'm pushing us, trying to get us through by noon, but let's go to a short break and then come back and start on number 13. Let's call the meeting back to order and move to item number 13. This is a first public hearing in consideration of introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 12, Exhibit A of the Code of Ordinances, SU 12-01 concerning Darrell Presley. Presentation by Planning Manager AJ Farmer.
Thank you. This request is for a special use. The special use, if approved, would allow for a firearms range in a general commercial, heavy commercial, or a CGCH zoning district. There were 43 notifications sent out on this request. We received three in favor, one in opposition. I'll show you where those came from in just a moment. Again, we're looking at west-central San Angelo. We are just south of West Beauregard Avenue and just east of South Pierce Street, also just south of Houston Hard Expressway and Sherwood Way. Here is the subject property. As you may recall, this is part of a shopping center, which we'll see in the aerial photograph here. We did consider the lots for which this use would sit upon and sent notifications to the remainder of the shopping center, as well as the 200-foot notification area. The vision plan map for this area calls for a neighborhood center that is conducive to some types of commercial usage. However, the current zoning is CGCH, which is a very intensive zoning district. And the zoning in this request is not proposed to be changed. It is simply a special use added to the underlying zoning. This is looking north down Pierce Street. The shopping center in question is here to the right. This is looking westward down Beauregard Street. Again, the subject property is off to the right. Across the left on the other side of the street is another strip center, and you see that sort of development, as well as some neighborhood development in the area. This is the subject property. The Outdoorsman is a current store that is in place at this location, and the location that is vacant to the immediate right of that property, or left if you're looking at it from this view, is the proposed location of this indoor gun range. So it would operate, again, in tandem with the Outdoorsman that has been in place there for some time. This is looking east, the opposite direction down Beauregard Avenue. Again, you see that strip type of development that I mentioned earlier. There is an apartment development here in this location. The one letter of opposition that we received was from one of the tenants, not the owner, but one of the tenants of this apartment complex. And looking at the criteria for a special use, the overriding sort of point of the ordinance is to look at transitions to see if there's any necessary impacts and if there's ways to mitigate those impacts. So we'll talk about how that's planned to be done with this. There are some limitations built into the zoning ordinance for firearms ranges- There are some limitations built into the zoning ordinance for firearms ranges. They are not allowed by right in any zoning district. And outside of the manufacturing zoning districts, there are specific use standards which apply to this location as well. The nature of the property, again, it's part of a large strip development. There is a vacancy in this location, which the applicant proposes to fill with this proposed use. It is part of a larger commercial corridor, and it does comply with the neighborhood center concept of the plan. It's something much less intensive than a typical CGCH type of development, which would encompass many things that would be allowed legally, but would not be consistent with the vision plan. Also, it's important to note that there is a good traffic circulation system in place at this location. There are a number of streets and intersections by which to funnel the traffic that could be generated by this. Section four oh eight of the zoning ordinance lays out the specific use standards that will apply to this. Those specific use standards are twofold: one, that the sound cannot emanate outside the property boundaries, and that it must be completely enclosed. We do have the applicant in attendance, and he can talk to you a little more intelligently than I can about the sound mitigation measures that he is proposing. However, planning staff does recommend approval of the special use as presented, again, subject to the specific use standards that are already outlined in the zoning ordinance. And the Planning Commission at their most recent meeting unanimously recommended approving the proposed special use by a vote of four to zero. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on the request.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a second from Mr. Hurstfeld. Beat you to the punch there a little bit. But anyway, I've got a motion from Mr. Adams, a second from Mr. Hurstfeld to approve as presented. Do I have further questions from counsel?
I have one.
Mr. Silvas.
AJ, and maybe the applicant. How is this, how is the sound going to?
I think I'll have him talk about that. He's more knowledgeable.
And what kind of guns are we talking about?
Yes, my name is Darrell Presley. And I am planning on allowing rifles and handguns, but probably will limit the certain-sized rifles, because, you know, some of them have enough report and enough blast, you start, you know, blowing light fixtures out of the apartment, out of the building there. But sound abatement will be achieved by, basically by thickening the walls with sound abatement material, which, you know, I'm probably going to use a material similar to Celotex, which is a fiber material, followed by a layer of sheet rock or gypsum, and another layer of the Celotex, and another layer of sheet rock. It's, you know, density seems to be what keeps sound from moving, you know, through, you know, through walls. And presently, the walls are cinder block walls. So, a few years ago, we did some testing when we were looking at, you know, turning that place into a range anyway, and fired blanks in one, and listened on the other side, and, you know, sound did come through it. But, you know, we could also hear sound coming through the walls when it was a movie theater. But, you know, it certainly is one of the considerations between my facility and the Salvation Army Home Store, and my facility and the Outdoorsman, you know. But, you know, it won't be through until it's quiet.
Mr. Presley, do you have any other locations such as this one?
No. There are no other indoor ranges in the area. I think the closest one is Abilene.
Okay. Other questions?
Just, I have one. Does the, is the state going to, are there any state regulations that you're going to have to follow in order to make sure that the range is safe, in order to make sure that sound is dealt with?
I'm not aware of any state regulations, you know, dealing with indoor ranges. I do know the EPA and OSHA have some considerations about lead primarily, but not sound.
Other questions?
I have one last one. You've already made modifications to the building, or are you?
I have not.
Okay.
I have not.
Because I, the last time I was in there was a long time ago. I didn't think it was that big, but maybe.
Well, there were two movie theaters, one facing the rear, one facing the front, and the projection rooms, bathrooms in the middle. My range will be the rear portion of the movie theater, which was the larger of the two theaters. Basically, it's primarily going to be a handgun range, because about the most I'm going to be able to get out of is fifteen yards. But the front half of it will be a place for classes, for meeting rooms, for retail. The front half of it, of the, it's almost the same size as the retail area of the Outdoorsman, as far as the depth goes, but it's not as wide.
I thought you said we're going to get a movie and a handgun range, but.
No, no.
That's okay.
Sorry. No, yeah, no movie and handgun range. Just handgun range and retail. But it was originally a movie theater.
That'll work.
One other question. Will you sell firearms?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Well, it is my, I had thought at first that I probably would not, you know, because I presently work at the Outdoorsman and have for over twenty years, but, which is right next door, and I don't want to be in competition. It will be a symbiotic relationship between us, between the range and the retail outlet there. But in that, we will probably have to have different hours. You know, I will probably end up, you know, also selling firearms. Yes, firearms and ammunition.
Okay. Now, my question, AJ, then, if he's selling firearms and ammunition, will we have to do a different zoning? Or will we be good with?
No. Retail uses, and as well as the meeting space that he's talking to, are both allowed uses in this zoning district.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve. I think we've asked the questions. Do I have other public input on this item? Okay. Let me call for this vote, then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number fourteen. This is the first public hearing in consideration of the Planning Commission recommendation modifying a request for a zone change from two-family residential to general commercial, alternatively recommending a zone change from two-family residential to neighborhood commercial, with an introduction of an ordinance. This is concerning item Z twelve dash oh-nine Donalds Bradley. Presentation by our Planning Manager AJ Fawer.
Thank you. I will explain briefly the change and the proposed zoning. The application was for commercial zoning, which is a zoning district, I'm sorry, a zoning use category in our ordinance that allows for the rental or sale of parking spaces, or leasing of parking spaces. The actual request in this case, after talking further with the applicant, is actually for parking accessory to a business. And so, we found, in talking at the Planning Commission level, that a CN district would be more conducive for the neighborhood around it, but would also allow the applicant to have parking accessory to his business, which was the intent of the original request. There were nineteen notifications sent out in regards to this request. We received five in favor and zero in opposition. This is just north of the Houston Hard Expressway and just west of the intersection of West Eleventh Street and Chadburn Street, which we'll zoom in and look at here. Let me pull up the aerial. The business in question, Spradley Custom Designs, is the building shown here on lots one and two. The subject request is this crosshatched lot here. In the aerial from two thousand and nine, it shows a house on the site. That house has actually been demolished and is no longer in place there. There is, however, an accessory building in place that the applicant would like to have remain there. The intent for this, again, is to pave a parking lot that would provide parking spaces for individuals that are patrons of this business on lots one and two. These need for parking is not necessarily a present-day use, but Mr. Spradley's thinking about the marketability of the property in the future, and the fact that we do have required off-street parking standards. In this location, as you can see, the building is actually built completely out to the property lines, so there are no remedies for parking to take place on those lots. He does actually own lot three and lot four, so if this was approved, it would allow the use of those two lots, both to conversion for parking. The vision plan map excerpt shown here calls for commercial at this location, so it is a zone change that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is a map showing the notifications that were received in favor. All of the areas in green wrote in in favor of this request. And after we sent out your background reports, we did receive a third notification in favor of the request that occupies lots one through seven here at the top of the map, so they were also in favor. Just a few pictures. This is looking east on Eleventh Street. This is looking down into the neighborhood, which is just adjacent to this corridor of Chadburn Street. And this is looking directly at the subject property. Again, as you can see, the house has been removed, and there is an accessory structure that is current at that location. There is some parking that is already taking place on lot three that is allowed. But again, the lot four is the subject of today's request. Here is some other parking along the south side of the building, but as you can see, it is largely in the right of way, so that is a hazard. And then lastly, this is looking the opposite direction down Eleventh Street, and there is, on the other side of the Chadburn corridor, another residential neighborhood in place at that location. So, in looking at the analysis of this request, again, the intent being to allow accessory parking, we really had to look at the building in question, and there are an important components to think about, one being the, again, proximity to the neighborhood. CN is the least intensive commercial classification that we have, so it is both consistent with the vision plan, and it is also the least intensive and intrusive for neighborhoods. And also, we had to think about infill development. As we try to encourage developers to move into existing buildings rather than moving outwards and building new buildings, we have to think about the opportunities there. And if there is no ability for off-street parking, then it could render this building vacant at some point in the future. Because this lot is not being used presently, and because it is consistent with our planning processes, we do feel that it's a good location for such a use. CN, keep in mind, would also allow things of a retail nature, so if he wanted to have an expansion of his business, although that's not planned, that could also be a use of that location. There is a lack of parking in the area. Of course, you all know Chadburn Street and that corridor very well. There really isn't great locations for on-street parking along that corridor, so that traffic has to move elsewhere. And we do see some parking, and do hear complaints somewhat routinely of parking further back in those residential neighborhoods, so this would also help alleviate that. With that, planning staff does recommend approval of the proposed zone change to CN. Again, less intensive than the original request actually was, but still allows the applicant what he needs. And the Planning Commission did recommend modifying this to the CN zoning, and they did recommend approval of it by a unanimous vote of four to zero. And if you have any questions, we can review those.
Mr. Morrison?
Motion to approve is presented. Second.
Motion and a second to approve as presented, so not modifying to the neighborhood commercial, but as.
CN.
CN.
We are presenting it as CN, a change to CN.
Got it. Okay. I wasn't following you well. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. It will be, become a neighborhood commercial.
Not ready. I have a question.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Questions? Okay. There's already, I noticed on one of the pictures that you showed us that parking is already taking place on the property.
Correct.
And this may be a dumb question, but I'm assuming that once this passes, that the parking lot will then be, will be paved, it'll be an improved surface?
It's a sequential question. It really depends on what happens with the building. As of right now, because the building's already occupied, and they're only occupying a small portion of it, they have the required parking. But that's a very large building, and if tenants start to come in, as each tenant came in for their permitting, they would have to add their share of the parking requirements, and at that time, it would have to be paved. So, a lot of that is largely dependent on when other tenants move into this building.
Mr. Silvas?
AJ, I noticed on the map, you're talking about lots four and five, is that right?
Three and four.
Three and four, okay. What, lot five, is that, did I see that as parking already, or?
They already have, or had, when we went out and took pictures, here it is, some cars parked on that lot. However, this lot is already zoned commercial, so it's allowed for them to do that.
But that's four right there we're talking about?
This is four, the subject of the request.
So, there's parking going on in the adjacent?
Correct.
And when would paving be?
Ms. Farmer?
I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't look that way. Forgive me, Charlotte.
Yes.
I need to learn.
You were forgiven, my son.
My question was to the motion, a motion to approve or motion to modify?
It's a motion to approve because it has been modified?
To approve it is CN. Prove is presented.
Which, that's where I was, Ms. Farmer, but it has been modified to neighborhood commercial. That's the motion. Mr. Adams?
My only, my only can, let me just make sure I understand it. I understand that we need the parking in order to keep the business in the community, and I agree with that. I understand that now, the business, based on the business that they're doing, they already have the parking that they need. My only concern is that we'll have a lot of parking on this property behind the business, and it's not paved. I'm concerned, you know, once we start getting rain, you know, how is that going to affect the neighborhood around that piece of property, since it's not improved? That's my only concern.
The trigger, if you will, for having that pavement put down on this location would be the certificate of occupancy for any additional businesses. So, before they could occupy and open and have all of their permits in order, they would be required to have the appropriate amount of paved parking for that business. That configuration could take a number of shapes, because it's such a large building, and you could split it up in a million different ways. But as people continue to come and fill up this building, each one will be required to carry an additional parking burden with it, and it has to be paved in order to get their certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have public input on this item? Further questions from counsel? Call for the vote. All those in favor of approving this as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number fifteen.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I was going to, it's a quarter till eleven, and I know there's some folks out there that are interested in the drought three discussion, or possible, us implementing it. So, I didn't know if we could move that item up in the essence of time, but it's, it looks like we're moving right along with these, but they are kind of starting to slow us down a little bit. So, if we wish to be out here by noon, I'd like to request, maybe.
Is it also your request?
I just wanted to pose the question to the council if they had any objection to moving nineteen up, to get these folks to hear that.
I was about to ask the same thing myself.
Okay.
Can we move nineteen up?
Could we have a show of hands of who's here for nineteen?
Okay.
Is Will here? Yeah, there he is.
Hang on just a second, please. If you don't mind, let's bring, let's, we just finished fourteen, correct?
Right.
Okay. Let's do fifteen and then go to nineteen, and that way, we have all of these, all these zoning things are knocked out.
Okay.
And then I won't bring up, I won't bring up the budget and those matters until, I'll bring up the drought three discussion next, and then I'll take us to the budget matters, okay?
Fair enough.
Okay.
I'll make this one very short for you. This is, this is a request to abandon an alley. Again, this is a bit of housekeeping for us. The property owner, in trying to transact property, was made aware that this segment of alleyway was never formally abandoned through the city, and so we're simply trying to finalize that so they can move forward with their property transaction. It appears that all intents were to abandon the segment of property, but it was never officially finalized, and so we're simply asking you to do that today. There's no utility issues with the property, and we recommend approval of it, as did the Planning Commission.
This is an alley going to nowhere. I make the motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Just one question.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of roads.
Did you get your motion in second? One, two, one, two.
There's that round road and stuff around that. All that's already been abandoned?
Correct.
Okay, all right. This just.
That was back in the original plans, back in the twenties, when Lakeview subdivision was first designed. There was supposed to be a round road there and everything, spokes all going into it. This is just an alley leading into the old lake.
So, but this is the last segment of that?
In this location, and I believe in the whole subdivision.
Back in the twenties, and I think.
You made the motion, right?
I did make the motion.
Back in the twenties, yeah, okay.
Yeah. I second it.
Okay. Further questions from counsel? Any public input on this item?
Would someone please put the lake back in Lakeview?
Please.
Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move to nineteen then, and so I'll have sixteen, seventeen, eighteen to Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move to nineteen then, and so I'll have sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, uh, to go back to. I'm sure, just for council, for council, um, I am sure that there's some budget items that have to be done today, right?
Yes.
Okay, so-
And our tax rate, too.
That's what I'm saying, the tax rate specifically, so let's just bear that in mind, whatever, what order, whatever order we do, we're gonna-
Keep track of time, it's ten till, so.
But whatever order we take, we have to be done by a certain time, if we can be, and, but we have to get the items done. Item number nineteen, this is the discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution implementing drought level three of the city's water conservation and drought contingency plan. And presentation by our Water Utilities Director, Will Wilde.
Uh, with August behind us now, unfortunately, we don't have any good news to bring you as far as our water supply. We didn't see any significant rains of any kind during August that would have produced runoff to the lakes, so they do continue to go down. Very briefly, we looked at the supplies this morning in comparison to where we would be in relationship to our overall water supply. We're still, at this point, just above that twelve-month supply, so it, as of today, we don't, uh, meet the trigger points for entering drought stage level three, but we are heading that away very quick, uh, as a result of the extreme heat we've been seeing the last several weeks, and, and as we said, of no runoff coming in the lakes, so, uh, as of today, uh, we do not qualify for the, the trigger points for drought level three.
Will, one of the things that we talked about at the last council meeting was approving moving to drought stage three, uh, in advance of the effective date. And in preparing for that, uh, did you find anything that would restrict our ability to do that?
Yeah, well, yes, it's not permissible under our own guidelines. Our own guidelines state that the, uh, Water Utilities Director, upon entering the stage, will then inform, uh, council, council will then resolve, we notify the public, so we have to be in the stage, and at that point, we can take action. It cannot be done, uh, by, based on prediction.
Okay, let me see if I can restate that, so that I understand it. We can't, uh, prospectively apply drought stage three. We must be in it, declare that we're in it, uh, before it has its effect.
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Hirschfeld, what I've done is asked staff to prepare as a standing item, the resolution moving to drought stage three, uh, to be on the agendas from this point moving forward, so that, uh, while we can't prospectively move to drought stage three, it does give notice to all who are watching that we will jump into it as soon as, uh, we can, and that we are awaiting that date. I know that's not strictly, um, in compliance with what your request was at the last meeting and what ended up, I think, being the consensus of council, but, uh, with, that was the, the closest we could come to fulfillment of that request.
Uh, with that said, I mean, so I realize that we can't enact, we can't putting that into effect, uh, but on the, I mean, we could have a discussion as we have a good number of people here that would like to discuss it about the possible action of when we, when we do get there, so that we've at least got some ideas of what we may want to do, correct? Can I do that? Can we do that?
Well, it says discussion, let's, okay, it says discussion and possible action, so I, I think that, uh, we're, we're very much-
Action force.
Yeah, we're very much in, in play, because it says discussion, and it says to adopt a resolution implementing drought level three, so as long as people that come up are talking about, you know, here's the way the ordinance reads about drought level three, and here's what I'm concerned about in that drought level three designation, as long as we stay on that topic, then we're in a great place, and so that's what I'll ask the audience to do, and we'll be informed about your concerns and thoughts, and that'll all be healthy for council.
No, we won't be taking action.
We, we won't be able to take action according to what we just heard. Mr. Alexander?
Hey, Will, when you're calculating the twelve-month point, are you calculating in hickory water that should start flowing, say, June? Is that part of the calculation, or is that left out?
At this point in time, it's not, because the ordinance states it's on our developed water resources, those that we have available to us at this point in time, that we could, in essence, turn on the faucet and it would be there for us. When we hit that point next year, then we can take that into consideration.
Okay. Just, just to be clear, he's not calculating in the hickory, and so when he says we have twelve months left, say, in a month or two weeks from, from right now, really, we have more than twelve months left, because we have water that will be coming in from the hickory beforehand, if we blend it-
Prospectively, right.
Right. And, and it may, we need to choose our ratio in understanding what that means, but-
I understand you, I appreciate you.
But I want to look at it that way, and, and also want to discuss pools and car washes.
Sorry.
I mean, is this okay to do?
No, it's just okay, get after it.
Okay.
I was not understanding what you were doing, I'm sorry.
So, can we, Will, by, by chance, let's just kind of step back one second, do you by chance happen to have, uh, the drought contingency plan that we can look at? I'm sorry? Okay. I mean, something they could pull up there, or, you know?
I think, I think part of what he's wanting is for everyone, including-
Background.
Okay, but I think what he's wanting in, is for everyone, including the audience, to kind of see what, see what drought level three contingencies are.
I was gonna say.
Uh, I, I guess what, what I was hoping to see is that we could see, you know, literally, the step of drought level three. You know, there's the list of items that we have, and if we could just go through those, because I think that's what people want to talk about and what we all need to discuss.
Okay, now, hang on a second. Is that gonna take care of you, where you could step into-
I think it will.
It's going to bring up the-
I'm asking him.
Problem.
Big boy.
The problem that the ordinance presents to us and people's jobs out there, how much water we're actually using or trying to save by-
If each piece comes up, you could weigh in on those things you were talking about, because I heard, right? So, you could weigh in? All right, let's, let's follow that practice and see if it doesn't get us where we're trying to go, okay?
Is that big enough?
Sure.
That's what I wanted to see.
Okay. Mr. Wilde, how about if you just walk us through drought level three? Right now, according to the presentations you've made, like at the water forum the other evening, you're, you're saying that with no inflows, that would be sometime in October, probably around the first of October, so, so if it happens October the first or around the first of October, you would then come back, according to what we just heard, you would then come back and say, "We are in drought level three, we need to move forward with these, these items," but is that correct?
That's right. Yeah, we would bring the resolution for actual adoption by the council then.
And then I think what everyone is trying to do now is to make sure we have good interchange with the public and each other about what drought level three is, and that we discuss the items as we move through them and, and go from there. So, so just take us through them, and, and folks, let's, the best I can, I'll be swiveling my head, but let's have a productive time of this, and I'll, I'll acknowledge, and we'll, we'll have a good discussion, okay?
Once we enter drought level three, then, uh, some of the additional criteria that would become effective in addition to those that are in place right now, is first is the use of city water, whether it's the treated city water or raw city water from the lakes or rivers, uh, for watering of gardens, landscape areas, trees, golf courses, shrubs, any type of plants being grown outdoors is prohibited. Uh, so that's, that's the first major change of any kind of really landscape watering is prohibited. The only exemption to that provision is the council can allow hand-watering of trees and building foundations, uh, on a certain days and certain schedules as the council may see fit. Uh, other than that, all outside watering is prohibited.
Will, let me ask you, go, start it, tell me, get, what, I mean, what month level of water do we have now? You said what?
Right now, I would, I would say we've got thirteen months.
And how do you determine that? I mean, what, how do you know? I mean-
It's based upon what we have available from all of our sources, which are OH Ivy Reservoir and our local lakes, Twin Buttes and Lake Nazareth at this point in time. OH Ivy Reservoir is projected to be able to supply twelve point two million gallons of water today to us through June of next year. At that point in time, it'll be low, below the intake pumping level for the reservoir, so at that point in time, then all we have available is our local supplies, and utilizing those then at about a nine million gallon per day usage rate, uh, we would deplete all sources by October of next year then.
But do you have folks at the measuring levels, is that, and then they give them to you, or?
Yes, as far as the lake levels are monitored daily.
They are, okay.
Further questions on this item, or further thoughts? Mr. Alexander, this item A, anything there? Well-
I, I wouldn't mind maybe going through kind of, and then we-
Okay, so you'd like to see a little bit of an overview and then come back to the pieces?
That's what I would like to see.
Is that okay with everyone?
Fine.
Okay, let's go through an overview, and then we'll go back to the pieces.
Uh, the second provision, uh, the use of city water for the filling, refilling or maintenance of any type of a fountain, ornamental-type fountains, or swimming pools is prohibited, so the filling or refilling of a swimming pool would be prohibited in drought level three. The next one, uh, is item C, that deals with washing of cars. Washing of cars would be prohibited, except the, in those cases, uh, to kind of summarize, those needed for public safety, for health reasons, uh, that the city, uh, Health Department Director, uh, would qualify in the washing of those type vehicles. Other than that, all car washing would also be prohibited. After that, then, there is the additional surcharges, uh, that would be applied, uh, to all water customer type accounts. Uh, for single-family residential accounts, an additional fee above the basic charges for usage of six dollars per thousand gallons will be assessed for all usage over ten thousand gallons. Uh, for apartment units, uh, the multifamily type, an additional fee of five dollars per one thousand gallons for over three thousand gallon applied to each unit within that complex. And finally, then, a fee of two dollars and fifty cents per thousand additional, uh, per one thousand gallons applied to all other accounts used.
Okay.
Uh, beyond that, then, uh, if there, there are any exceptions, uh, that the council will grant, there are provisions within the ordinance that get into, uh, the, the exception of variances that the city may, the council may receive concerning any, any of these requirements.
With that said, I mean, if we enact, let's just know the boundaries of what we can and can't do based upon the current law, uh, if there, if we wanted to add exceptions or add variances or add delays on certain triggers, um, would we be allowed to do that?
We'd have to enact an ordinance, amending this ordinance with two readings, but there's nothing, um, impermissible under state law. I've already researched that. Uh, we do, we are the owners of our plan.
Okay, so, all right.
Could you roll the exemption and variance up, up more, if it won't, okay, thank you.
One of the, the stated exceptions or variances within the ordinance is a person who may be working on a, on an existing landscape, a sprinkler system. Uh, for testing that system, uh, it is, it's automatically granted exception to, to the ordinance there, so that they can, if they're working on it in the afternoon during their prohibited watering hours or some other time like that, they could go ahead and complete their, their activities. Uh, the other is, uh, the watering of large landscape areas such as the public parks, athletic facilities, uh, either at schools or the colleges, cemeteries, uh, is exempt from the standard requirements, and their usage is tied to, uh, their watering frequencies and application rates, uh, for each of those facilities then.
Could you explain that again? Item number two, I want to make sure-
Item number two would be a good example, be the, the sports complex, the real conscious sports complex, being a very large area as it is, uh, there are only, I think, two or three meters that serve that entire complex, so to try to limit it to watering one day per week, the entire complex would just really, uh, be very difficult in trying to supply that much water to the entire area. So, what they've done on that particular facility is come up with a watering plan whereby they would water different areas, uh, throughout the week, so that we can supply it without over, overtaxing the system.
Can you back up a little bit? But if no one's allowed to water-
Outside.
Outside, then that exception is-
That, that would only apply under drought level one, two, or standard conservation, not under drought level three.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Clarify that. Under drought level three, watering would not be allowed at parks and athletic facilities and schools and colleges and cemeteries?
That's correct.
Okay. Cause it's listed as an exception-
That's a generic exception.
And a variance, so it should, it should be up on the top, you know? No watering shall be allowed, including facilities, athletic, schools, colleges, cause it kind of looks like an exception to the rule, but it's not.
Right.
Again, it, it doesn't apply to drought level three. It allow, it applies to drought, the first three stages, conservation, drought level one and drought level two. Okay. Is there anything else, sir, that's specific to drought level three?
The variance is, the variance B, um, is, is specific to drought level three, because people can apply for a variance. Uh, car washes, swimming pools, whatever, but we need to know that. There are people here that can apply for that variance, and then people on television watching that can apply for it.
Can you go back to the variance language?
As far as beyond the standard, the exceptions already stated in the ordinance, an individual could request a variance from the council, uh, from the provisions of the ordinance. Uh, in doing that, they would have to, in essence, state how they may be impacted by the particular provisions of that drought level, and then the efforts that they would, would make to try to conserve water, water in other manners, or how they could supplement, uh, the, the water supply and some other means like it. So, there are provisions within the, the variance that, that state the criteria, uh, that the petitioner would have to provide then in the, the review and evaluation of that request.
Okay, so, but this is the one that says the specific provisions of the article from which the petitioner's requesting an exemption, detailed statement of, as to how the specific provision of the article adversely affects them, uh, and on and on. I mean, it tell, it says, "How is it hurt, how's it gonna, this, this will hurt me, here's how it will hurt me, here's what I'm going to do, here's what I want, I can do about it, but I need a, a variance from this, so that I can continue to do X."
That's right.
The problem with that is those are individuals, correct? That's a single entity individual?
That's how the ordinance said.
And, and that, frankly, from my perspective, I, I, I'm not real excited about trying to issue all these personal variances to this and to this and to this. I think if we're going to issue a variance, it needs to be based upon, okay, if we want to talk about the swimming pool filling or not, hit that one up and say, "Here you go." If we want to talk about hand-watering, period, there you go. Car washes, period, there you go. And then establish that kind of group-wise, so that's where I'd like to maybe hit the focus now.
And that's where, that's where my concern was.
Want to move back?
If you have an, if you have an individual whose livelihood is based upon the fact that they own three car, three car washes, uh, and then you have an individual who may have car washes to supplement their, their income, I, I, I think rather than hear both of those cases separately as it relates to variances, we need to have, uh, one piece of tapestry that would cover car washes in general, and the same thing with, with swimming pools.
Perfect, right there. That's really the topic that we, I think we all need to talk about.
Items, uh, B and C and A, B and C?
Yeah.
Okay, well, um-
But we're not supposed to take, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay. We're not taking action, we are, but I think we are trying to gather facts and have a discussion.
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
You know, the last time we talked about a possible level three here, uh, then I drive down Bell Street and I see, like, uh, it looks like they're, they're having torrential rains over the park out there, the Texas Sports Complex. Um, my question is, I wonder how many, how many gallons of water we're using on that park? And then, secondly, the question comes back to mind is the, I wish Tony Fox or Mary Cleveland were here to give us a report on the, the residential users that are still using fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, hundred thousand gallons a month, you know? If that's still going on, you know, that, that's terrible, you know?
But it's not illegal.
I know, but we, we, we preach conservation all this time, but yet we got folks, you're right, it's not illegal, so, but when are we going to change that, that way of thinking for some of these folks that are, are just sucking us dry, you know? Just because they can afford it, doesn't make it right, but-
I still, I mean, I understand your thought process there, and I, and I think is, you know, always remember that water's what we fight about, but, but you, you sell water, so we constantly are looking for a balance between, how do you keep the water fund healthy? How do you sell enough water to meet, meet your needs? You have high, high fixed costs, okay? You have high, high fixed costs, okay? We have a water treatment facility and all the labor and all the people that work there and that go with that, all the chemicals that have to be bought, all the filters that have to be bought. We have water lines and water line replacement and all of the things that are related to water supply. Someone has to buy that water, so I want us to, you know, just be balanced, it's not a, I'm not look, I don't want us looking for boogeymen, that's all I'm saying, that, you know, the, the big users are gonna be us. We're the number one user, the city.
Right, right.
The number one user is the city.
That's why I asked about the park, and then, and secondly, Will, is there a, is there a report out there of this continued usage by some of these top users other than the city? You know, I guess there's got to be.
I have a report.
And I'm talking about residential, you know?
Johnny, in regard to the-
Yeah, but you're on a witch hunt now.
Well, no, not really, but-
Yes, you are.
I would hope those folks would at least think twice about using that much.
But if it's legal, you're on a witch hunt.
I understand that. But, you know, when I'm, I barely hit the 10,000 gallons and I would help, I would hope some folks out there would at least think twice about, at least conservation is what I'm trying to preach.
Johnny, in regard to the sports complex, we have limited our watering down to what the ordinance requires. In addition to that, the city has proactively looked into the future. We have winterized our grass and we will be down to zero watering by the, by the middle of this month. We were intending to implement that before we ever go into a drought stage three, so the city, I believe, is trying to set the example in regard to what we do as far as our water usage.
Well, there was, there was a list provided recently that showed each thing the city's doing to wind down and become compliant before the process is required.
Right, you'll also notice that there, there are certain high priority areas within the city that we want to at least try to water within the ordinance, the sports complex being one of those. If you look at the remainder of the parks in the city, most of them are brown because we're not watering. So, I mean, we've really tried to set the example there. The sports complex-
Mr. Alexander, sorry, Ms. Farmer has asked to be recognized. Ms. Farmer?
Oh, I was answering his question.
Okay.
I wanted to state here that personally, I feel the education of conservation should be at the very, very top of what we're doing. I don't want to put any business out there out of business because we're gonna hit them first, don't use water because the assumption is you use more water than anybody. I want to tell you that in my household, in my family households, we've been doing a little test for the last 60 days. And it may sound crude, it truly might to some of you, but want to save the trees, water bill's excessively high, we've been reusing water to the point of a three gallon bowl in the sink for every time that I wash my hands, which is a lot. And I was very, very surprised at how much water I can collect three or four times a day that I have to go empty into a bucket and then take the bucket out to water my trees. That's using, that's my part to do less. I think our citizens of San Angelo would rather be able to get their car washed or be able to swim if everyone would start doing their part. One load of washing machine, if you do, I have the updated water miser which doesn't use near the water that the old ones do, but most people have, it can be two years and it's an older model now, that they don't have the water miser, 40 gallons. My son put a drum, a 33 gallon drum at his washer to put into that, that drum with the hose to drain out to water his trees. He desperately wants to save his trees. 40 gallons of water, you gotta be real careful and, and let it drain out, stop the machine or you're gonna run over your household, but it's doing our part to conserve water. Some people don't wanna fool with it, but I think I'd rather drive a clean car, be able to have my car washed, and be able to sleep at night knowing that it didn't put people out of business and people on the streets because they didn't have jobs. I think there's what, 120 businesses here in town, car washes, and they can employ three to 80 people depending on the size of their business. That's a lot of folks, and, you know, I was reading in First Corinthians eight the other day, and it said, "Invest in others." And I would love to see the San Angelo citizens invest in each other to conserve before we'd go as so drastic as to shutting down businesses, livelihoods, and putting people out of work. Yes, it's a serious situation, we don't have water, but if we can get the attention of the public to do their part to conserve, maybe we can hold off just a few more months and continue to pray for rain.
And that's all I'm saying. No witch hunt, that's exactly what I was, I'm trying to say.
I backed you up, Charlotte.
Yeah.
Very good point.
Okay, Mr. Alexander?
I was just answering a question.
Go ahead.
Johnny asked about how much water the, the sports complex takes. I have from Carl White from a, an email in November, it takes about 30% of our park water down the middle of, of the city, along the Conshul River at about 195 acre feet a year. That's what it takes, just to let you know. And that's 30% of the use along the Conshul River, all the parks, Santa Fe Park, Civic League, Visitor Center, Sunken Garden, the NEFS area, Fighter, Firefighters Memorial City Park, all those, Kirby.
Combined?
Combined, oh, no, no, that, that combined, it's a, it's about 600 acre feet.
Thank you. So what you just said was somewhere around 600 acre feet for all the parks along the river-
Maybe 550, 570.
With 30% of that total coming just at the sports complex.
Yeah, and the reason I asked for this is if we ever take our affluent water and treat it and send it down the Conshul River, what parks could we use that affluent water? We could, we could use 600 acre feet on those parks and, and not take it from our regular water supplies, that's why I asked.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments?
May we hear the people that came to talk?
Well, I, I wanted to kinda go through, just to kinda hit some of these topics, we seem to be, I mean, we're going through some good stuff, but we really haven't, to me, laid out some proposals, and that's what I'd like to kinda throw some things against the wall, and then let all of y'all give thoughts, opinions, whatever. That, that, so-
Okay.
I guess a couple of things that I've, you know, that I've got is the, you know, hand watering of trees, just, you know, that's one of the things that I think we're allowed to do as part of the ordinance. I think that would be something reasonable. Car washes, I mean, I know that that's one that, hitting the, the businesses, I guess it would be the car washes. And one of the topics there might be, I know there are some that are in town that you, that have reuse, that, that do the reuse as opposed to those that just everything goes down the, down the drain, okay? That's a topic that I think that we need to maybe, maybe talk about, maybe allow an exemption. And when I've looked at some of the, some of the restrictions in other cities, Odessa, Midland, Abilene, San Antonio, such like that, that, you know, possibly having limited timeframe, that you can only run, operate the car wash between here and here. Again, that's just some things that I've, I've noticed and seen out there. Golf courses, I know we're gonna absolutely kill the golf courses, and I know people are gonna throw things at that, but golf courses have a tremendous, tremendous, tremendous investment in their greens. They can lose fairways, and they can redo those. They can redo tee boxes, those don't make a difference, but greens absolutely make a difference. One of the thoughts may be allowing golf courses to only hand water the greens. That's, again, just something I want to throw out that, you know, we can have some discussion on. And then, I guess the last item really is the maintaining of the pools, and I know there's a few of you guys out there on that. And, and the thought props, my thoughts may be that while we, when we go into drought level three, you know, when it happens, cause it's imminent, it's gonna happen, that we can come up with some of these items that we can say, okay, for these four items, here's what we're gonna implement for three months. And then in three months, we have to look at it again, and if things are, continue to go downhill and not making any headway, then we can either decide, okay, let's continue on for another three months, another two months, or we say that's it, and now we're back to, you know, going strictly by the, by the law. So those are my thoughts as far as what it may be, and I'm kinda with you, I wouldn't mind hearing from all these folks out here.
Okay, but out of fairness, I mean, I have a council member say some ideas, I need to give council members a chance to-
Sure.
To respond, and I'll get us to the public.
Okay, I can, I can respond to those four, four categories, and we should probably put trees and foundations, maybe that foundations is another one. We can exempt trees and foundations, we can do that. We cannot do car washes, golf courses, pools, and we need an ordinance change to do that, and if, if that's what we need to do, then we need to get on it, because we, we can't do that. They have to apply for an exemption, one at a time, that's what it says right now. And so we have a problem, we're gonna be going into drought level three, and it's easier now to think about what that really means than it was back in September, what is it, two years ago, one year ago, when we created this ordinance? And I think we need to make adjustments instead of sticking with it necessarily. We need to be sharper what we do. Now, we are not calculating in the hickory when we talk about one year left, and I think we should. If there's any problems, then say no, but, but at least get through April. I think that we should do a lot of this through April when the hickory is right there, when we're gonna know if it's gonna work out or not, and relook at this stuff in April. So you're saying three months, I'm saying April. All right. Trees, if we allow 750 gallons per resident, per month, that is 1,000 acre feet a year. And I, I think that we can handle like 1,000 acre feet per year to save our trees, that is a major deal in San Angelo. We are the edge of the desert, and you can't just stop watering trees without losing a lot of trees. And I think that a lot of people are concerned about that, and I think we can handle it with the hickory coming online especially. Car washes, just looking at one car wash, the car wash behind Burger King or Knickerbocker uses about nine acre feet a year. Let me just say, the equalization channel, I went out and measured it, we're losing 4.5 cubic feet a second out there. That's still way over nine acre feet a day, I mean, it's like 15 acre feet a day, something like that. We, our own water system loses tremendous amounts of water. If we're worried about nine acre feet, then we need to go out there and spend some more money on pipes and get that water from the south pool to the north pool by pipe all the way so we don't lose in the equalization channel. I don't want to be shutting down car washes when the city of San Angelo is not perfecting our own water system. That is something we can do something about, and we need to do something about it, and, and I can't seem to get that moving. But we're losing water every day, I don't want to shut down the car washes if we're gonna be that sloppy with our water. Pools, there are, according to the tax office, this is fresh information, about 997 residential pools and about 84 public or commercial pools. Those residential pools with a square footage of about 512 feet lose, I mean, my data here, they lose about 60 acre feet a year, and I'm considering people playing in them and splashing water up and splashing it out, cause it's really 47 acre feet, they get a little use, so I'm saying 60 acre feet a year is what they lose. The commercial pools, they're gonna evaporate about 9.6 acre feet a year, but people splashing water out, it's really more like 20 acre feet. The public pools lose about 20 acre feet a year. That's not a lot of water, and I sincerely think that public pools should not discontinue use, we need that in our city, it's hot, kids can go out and play, it's not a lot of water savings, we can do it, we can save water other ways.
So do your math.
So what I'm telling you is-
Mr. Alexander, do your math a little bit for me though. Is that something like 84 times 20? Is that what you just said?
Eighty-four. Oh, I just took the, I said the surface area, the average surface area is about 1,000 acre feet. All right, at Bentwood, it's 2,000, at our city pool, it may be 4,000, but at the roadway end, it's only 600.
That's okay.
So I said 1,000 acre feet, all right? And, and I, and I said, if it's 1,000 acre feet, we have 84 of these, that's 9.65 acre feet per year, that's .8 days of water. Okay, but we have the hickory coming on, so it's a day of water about. The residential pools are about 2, 2.4 days of water for the city of San Angelo, that is a total of 3.2 days of water that we consume to keep our pools open for a year. Just looking at one pool, the Bentwood pool's gonna take about a half of acre foot, but splash, et cetera, make it about an acre foot. The city pool's gonna evaporate away about an acre foot of water, but splashing it around and everything, it's gonna be about two acre feet. I would suggest it's not allowing them to turn on the sprayers that spray it up into the air, there's a lot of loss there, I would just keep those things off, keep the pools open so people can take a swim. Again, we know we have water coming in from the hickory, we know we can save water in the EQ channel, we can save water below Nazworthy, enormous amounts of water, I mean, we're talking thousands of acre feet of water below Nazworthy. There's illegal pumping going on, there's things we can do to help the situation in other ways. Golf courses, hand watering those greens, I bet you they put somebody out there to do it, because those are, that's $300,000, $400,000 investment and plus lost income from nobody being on play golf, or those greens are rehabilitated, et cetera, et cetera, those are problems as well. I, I'm looking for more data from car washes, they're gonna come up here and talk a little bit, I want to know how much each, there's a history there, how much is each car wash using, so that we understand what we're dealing with here, and maybe the recycled water, those car washes, you know, maybe have better privileges than car washes that don't recycle their water, and, et cetera. I think I've given you all the data here, as best as I can give it right now, but my message is that we can do better as a city of San Angelo on our water system, we should not be putting people out of jobs if we can improve the water system dramatically, I'm talking thousands of acre feet-
Okay.
Saved if we can just rearrange our water a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Silas?
I had a question for Paul. You lost me on the 750 gallons a month. Were you talking about for trees, or?
Okay, if you, if every water tap in San Angelo uses 750 gallons, that is the equivalent of 1, 1,000 acre feet per year. 750 gallons a month equals 1,000 acre feet a year out of our water supply.
You're talking about to, for, for the household total, for the month?
Every single meter gets 750 gallons, so there's 35,000 meters. So every house gets 750 gallons, if they took that 750 gallons every month, we would be down 1,000 acre feet in our water supply.
I'd never get to take a shower.
That's theoretical, he's just pointing out, I mean, it's theoretical, he's just pointing out that if each house used 750, it'd be 1,000 acre feet.
So when you give an allowance of 750 gallons per house, you need to know what you're saying, you're, you're really, you're gonna use up 1,000 acre feet.
Right. Okay.
If, you know, some people are gonna use more, they're gonna try to get away with it, and some people won't use any.
Okay, other questions up here? Okay, let's open it up to the public then, and so you've touched on the car washes, golf courses, swimming pools, and then the hand watering of trees and foundations.
And we're gonna, it is necessary to change our ordinance, we're gonna need to do that, and we're gonna need to do group exemptions, if sponsored by anybody within the group, and, you know, we, we need to be able to do that, it's gonna be ridiculous if we don't.
Just to have some semblance of order, I mean, should you, should we like tackle these in public comment, kinda by these topics, so we're not all over the board, so we can focus on pool, or this, or that, and, I don't care.
And it's already 11:30, so just move.
Yeah, we gotta move, so.
Okay.
Giddy up.
All right, okay, what, here's the deal on the, on the public input, let's walk through these, and I've, just because it's the way it was discussed and it was described, let's go through pools. If you're to comment on pools, come in and comment, you'll be limited to five minutes, okay? So try, try not to monopolize the mic, let us learn as much as we can from you, and I'll turn the timer on when you step up, and we'll just listen to you, and you can tell us about pools. Anyone that wants to talk about pools, after that I'll take on golf courses, after that I'll take on car washes, okay? So pools, if you'll start making way, your way to the front, so you can be on the front row and step right up, I would appreciate it, the best and most efficient use would be appreciated. Go ahead.
Good morning, Councilman Mayor, my name's Bob Banks, I'm the general manager at the roadway end, and I've had a handout distributed to y'all. An impact on not allowing us to refill the pools is dramatic. First and foremost, it creates a health risk. If the water falls below the skimmer basket, we can't fill it back up so that water's circulating through our pump system, being treated and put back into the pool, pools are gonna go green, there're gonna grow algae, there're gonna grow bacteria, it's gonna be a breeding ground for mosquitoes, and a big haven for West Nile virus. The city today started spraying for West Nile virus in District 1 and 6, you're gonna have to continue to do that more often if we let these pools dry up. I purchased 22,000 gallons of water to fill the pool and maintain the pool, to keep the pool structure integ, integrity. If we have to drain that pool, we're gonna lose the integrity to the, to the, to the walls and the bottom, there's a chance that the walls will crumble, the pool will come up out of the ground. Not to mention, we'll have to drain green water back into the sewage system, okay? What we do at roadway end in the way of conserving water, since people asked about water conservation, we have water conservative showerheads. I just spent $9,000 replacing a 30-year-old washer to a more up, top-line, up-to-date washer for the hotel. We only wash full loads, we don't do half loads. We don't water our grass once every week, we water our grass twice a month. But I always see runoff going down the street behind the hotel, and I get calls from Water Conservation telling me I need, need not to be watering my grass every day. My clocks are off, I'm not watering. You know, the big, the big problem is the pool's going stagnant, and what do we do with the water once it does go stagnant? You know, then we're gonna be dumping water out, back into the water, into the sewer system, then that water's gonna have to be heavily treated to get, to get more water. I, on, on the handout, I'm not opposed to closing, our pool currently stays open all year long. We do have a hot tub, our guests come in, they like to sit out at the pool and relax. I'm not opposed to closing the pool down, but I ask that you allow us to maintain our levels so we can keep our water treated, so we don't cause a public health risk, that you allow us to open our pools during our peak season, which is summertime, which will help sustain loss of economic impact into our city, hot dollars and sales tax, cause guests come in and they spend their money elsewhere. because guests come in and they spend their money elsewhere. So, you know, please take into consideration, you know, this, these exemptions and how it's going to affect everything. You're going to lose, you're going to lose money on water, on your water fund because you can't sell water. You've got the possibility of losing a ton of sales tax revenue because people aren't going to come to San Angelo. And I'll be honest to you, I close my pool down throughout the year when my chemicals go out of balance. Um, I use Hill Pools who's here, um, and she gets, Becky can tell you, I, I come in there like, my pool, I gotta get it open, I'm full, I'm full, I got people complaining, can't open it, Bob, you can't open it. You can't do this, you can't do that, it's got to be this, it's got to be that. You know, we adhere to the state laws to make sure our pool is safe for our, for our consumers and for the city, and the city as well. You know, another thing is if there was a big fire in, at the hotel, the city's got to come in and put out a fire. I got 22,000 gallons sitting in my swimming pool they can use to put out the fire instead of tapping into city water to put out the fire. So, they're, they're my points and I just hope that, you know, you all can make some changes in your ordinance.
Bob, it's a safety threat as well, it could fall into that pool if it's empty. It's a safety threat, is that right?
Well, our, our pool by law has to be gated. Um, we have a wrought iron gate around our pool and we have, we have the possibility of locking the pool, which we do every night, but that does not prevent people from hopping the gate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
My name is Tobin Abbott, I'm with Southwest Pools and Spas here in town. I also am, I have a pool at my house, so kind of looking at both sides. And I'm not going to repeat, sorry, a, a lot of what he said, I think a lot of it makes sense, now you're just going over it again. A couple of things, just like you said, letting them go stagnant, it, it's, I see the, the cost of it. I, I think a few of you, I know a few of you have, have pools too, but it's the cost of, if we do have to let the water go down, you're ruining the interior of the pool, you know, and so that's all homeowners, not just me as a pool builder, that it's costing, you know? Uh, and of course, like I said, just as letting them, letting them turn green, the different things, the health issues there, uh, as far as the expense of them too. And, and, and I, I realize that it's, I don't have a problem even being as a pool builder, okay, we can't fill pools right now. I, I know what the lakes are like, I've been out there, I know. I'm okay with that, not that it's going to, it's going to hurt my pocket, but I understand that part. It's just the refilling, that's the main thing I think we're looking at right now, is trying to keep them full. Safety issues, you know, like you said, with kids, even residential pool. Yes, a kid could fall in and drown, well, you kind of watch that, but a kid falls in and breaks his arm in a dry pool or one that's partway down or, you know, there's just some different issues. Some of the, there are some of the, with a pool full, there's some sensors on there that if a kid falls in, sometimes that sensor goes off, well, if the water's down, you don't have that. There's just several issues there and that's what we're kind of looking at, I think, right now, is not the filling them, just the maintaining them, so.
Just one thing, address the, the integrity of the pool, of an empty pool.
Empty pool with a plaster pool. I do plasters, uh, the Hills do the liner pools and they're more familiar with them. The plaster pool, once that water level gets down below the tile, okay, when the plaster, on a plaster pool, the water, the plaster has to stand water, okay? Or it, it dries out and cracks, falls off, okay? If, if that water level gets down below the tile, the further it goes, I mean, it, it does that, and the, the plaster is what deteriorates, it starts falling off and you have to complete, I mean, you can't just patch it. It has to be a complete replaster on the pool, which anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000, depending on the size of the pool. But if it's drained, you can't leave a plaster pool drained or it will run.
I, I have a, I need to ask, because of expertise there, what about covers or-
Okay.
Certain times of the year, a cover-
Solar, cover- Solar blankets, and that is, and I think Craig and Becky, as well as us, have had people already calling and saying, okay, what are we going to do to our pool? What are we going to do to a pool? There, there are chemicals that, and Becky's a little more familiar with it, that can be added that are supposed to reduce the evaporation. Solar, any kind of cover. You can take a hot tub, I, I've got a separate hot tub with a cover on it, stays hot with a cover on it. You may add water once in three months. I mean, if you can keep it covered, then that's where you cut out so much on the evaporation. Even a solar blanket, which is kind of like the bubble wrap or whatever, but just any kind of blanket, something over it that would reduce the evaporation. And if we can, there again, education, if we can educate the pool owners to that, you know, some people do them in the spring and the fall just to help warm up the water temperature. That's what they're designed for, but they also definitely help on the evaporation. Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Craig Hill, I'm with Hill Pools in, here in town. And reiterate what Tobin was saying about, if, if the water level drops below that skimmer, we can't circulate that pool. There is no reason to put chemicals in it, we can't keep it from turning green without filtration. So that's the biggie. When water, if we let the pools drain in the in-ground vinyl liners, we, we lose the liner, just like you would the plaster. So one of the things that I want to address y'all with is the amount of cost to all the pool owners in San Angelo. If, if we can't maintain these pools, then they're, they're gonna, we'll have to go in and fix them when we do get water, at, at a high cost. The other thing, we, we are trying to educate our customers in conjunction with Tobin over at Southwest, as far as there's a chemical called Cover Free, you put four ounces in the water and it cuts down the evaporation. The solar blankets also cut down the evaporation. We are entering the end of our evaporation season. Pools don't evaporate as much in the winter. So I would ask you to postpone this, the, the not being able to maintain the pools till we get to our next evaporation season when it becomes a bigger problem.
Any idea on the solar blankets, what kind of-
What, what's it going to cut it down? Uh, you know, without, I didn't bring any backup with me, but if you want my professional opinion, you can conservatively say 65 to 70%.
Less evaporation.
Less evaporation with the solar blanket, you're probably, uh, I'm going to say in the, in the 60% range with the, the liquid Cover Free, the chemical you pour in. So it's, both of them are going to be over 50%.
And, and one of the other facets, when I was reading, and I don't remember what city it was, but they say that at least 25% during certain drought levels, that 25% of your pool has to be covered shaded in some way to limit evaporation, and they actually say all the floaties and everything like that, it counts as part of that, so obviously-
And it does.
It does work.
I mean, it, you know, just, just say your average 16 by 32 pool, um, an inch of water and that's going to be 320 gallons. So if we can cut that at least in half, um, and, and you times it by all the pools in town, it, it's a lot of water. But I just, I'm asking you to postpone this and, and take into consideration the, the health risk and, and the, the property damage.
It's going to take an ordinance change. Yeah. Well, it, it does take an amendment to the ordinance, but, uh, I wanted to ask you, you know, I, I mean, it seems in, it seems intuitive or June, July, August are probably the highest. September's probably still pretty darn high. When does evaporation abate? Well, I mean, what, what's the time marker when you expect to put less water in a pool to refill it?
When we start getting the, the ambient temperatures down in the 60s and 70s and the water temperatures down-
Daytime temperatures?
The average temperature, day and night.
Okay.
Okay? And, and we start getting the temperatures down in the pools, 60, 65 degrees, your evaporation rates is going to go way down.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Hill.
Sure.
I, I by no means am, am I an expert in pools, but, so this, the refilling of pools, is that happening right now as we speak? I mean, do they refill themselves or how does that work?
Not the whole pool, we're, we're talking just maintaining. As the pools evaporate down, you know, we have to add an inch and a half, two inches of water per week, per 10 days.
But that's not what we're talking about, but refilling of the pool, right? When we lose-
Talking about-
The maintain, maintain fills.
He doesn't, he doesn't mean-
We're not raining and refilling.
No, 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 that's, that's excellent.
Topping it off.
Yeah, that's-
Topping it off, yes.
That's what, okay, that's what Paul was talking about, the splashing and all that splash that you lose, when you top it off, that's not the same as refill. I mean, I, I, I know an empty pool, refill, but-
When Mr. Abbott described refilling, he meant, he means topping it off. I mean, he's, he's not talking about having to drain-
That's where I was lost a little bit, wait a minute. He's topping it off.
Filling, refilling, or maintain, is the way they're treating, I believe.
So you're just using the same language, but anyway. But refilling as a definition is this replacement of water that evaporates or is splashed out.
Wow.
Okay? So if it's down this much, we're filling it back up, refilling, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Okay, thank you, sir. Others on pools?
Hi, I'm Becky Hill, Craig's wife, and I just was going to make a comment, the Cover Free chemical that we were talking about, I've been doing a little experiment at my own pool. We have an 18 by 36 pool with about 24,000 gallons of water and I've been adding the chemical, trying to be very religious with putting it in when I'm supposed to, to see if it will help with the evaporation on the bottle. It says that it will cut down evaporation 85%. So I haven't really tested the whole theory yet to see if that, that is true, but that's what it claims. Started putting it in my pool three weeks ago and I added water today for the first time in three weeks. Now, I did have a little bit of rain, so that helped. But these are just some things, you know, that, that we can do and we can try to, to help with the evaporation. Like I said, this is kind of a, wanted to give you all a little bit of information as far as, you know, it, it has cut down watering. I have been putting, we put water in the pool probably once a week, um, once every, you know, yeah, probably once a week during the hotter times of the year. So it did, it has helped a little, and I would assume the more you put in the pool, the more, um, that it will help. And the only other thing I wanted to say, we, y'all talked about it a minute ago, I would like to be able to file that exemption, um, if, if, if we can do this or we can continue to top off our pools, if we would be able as company owners or whatever to file that exemption as a whole on behalf of all the pool owners instead of having everybody come in and do that. I think that's something we can do for our public and, um-
Okay, it's a reasonable request, but I don't think the ordinance allows that. I think the ordinance requires individuals to, to file for exemption. So let's move past that and hear what Mr. Alexander was saying and the others, that Mr. Hirschfeld's saying roughly the same thing, but that an amendment to the ordinance, if we're going to do something for all pool owners, really the, the better way for us to accomplish that is not for you to file a petition for exemption, but for us to just revisit the ordinance.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
What was the name of that chemical again? Just curious.
It's called Cover Free, and my address is 999 Nickerbock, no, just kidding.
I was going to ask, where do you find it?
Others on pools? Okay.
Just, just one, one thought. We talk about the amount of water that we have to use, replace in the pool. Just stop and think about how much water will be used if we're not allowed to keep our pools filled and filtrating. How much water, when we are allowed and we come out of stage three, back down to a stage two where we can fill our pools, the amount of water that's going to go back into these swimming pools.
Yeah. Let me ask you a question right quick.
Yes, sir.
As a commercial pool operator, what's the reasonableness of council requiring a solar blanket or a, what are your thoughts on that kind of thing? From, from October the 15th until May the 1st or whatever?
You know, that's, that's another added expense. Putting a solar blanket on is going to increase a liability if somebody does go into, into the pool area and falls into the, into the pool and into the solar blanket. I've now been aware, made aware of a chemical that is out there that we can put in the pool and trust me, I'll be stopping at Becky's store on the way home to pick up a bottle and start adding chemicals to my pool. I don't know what the cost of a, a solar cover is, but on my pool, which is an 18 by 36 pool, um, I'm sure that it's going to be a couple of thousand dollars expense.
Okay.
Far cheaper than plaster.
Yeah.
Okay. It's all right, I was going to ask someone else and I appreciate you, I'm going to do the same thing you're about to. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bankster. Uh, Mr. Abbott or Mr. Hill, either one of you, would y'all help me with the same question? Do you have any input on the question that I just asked about solar blanket or that kind of thing? I mean, when would it go on? When would it go on? When would it need to come off? How can it be operated and what does that do for conservation? In other words, how, in, in some kind of an approximate cost?
On, on a residential side, most people, what, what we do with the solar blankets is put them on in the spring and it helps warm the water up where they can extend their season, on the, on the front end, down the back end.
But your perspective, sir, is that in the winter, there's no evaporation anyway, so putting it on is of no real help or hurt, right?
There, I'm not going to say there's no evaporation in the winter, it just cuts way down.
So back to what, hear what I'm describing, if we were trying to figure out how to help but be as responsible about water as, as possible, how would, we need an education on that blanket, its cost, its use, when it could be used, those kinds of things.
It can be used year-round, you can leave it on there year-round. Uh, a residential side, your average solar cover is 350, 250 to 350? Um, the liquid, as far as what Bob's talking about with, with drowning, the solar blankets are not going to be safe at, at a commercial pool, but the Cover Free, the, the liquid is. It, it's, you won't know it's on there. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Um, as far as the residential swimming pools, we have a lot of customers that use them. And, and a lot of customers report to us that they don't lose near as much water with the solar blanket on.
Okay.
I can speak from personal experience with the solar blanket versus the cover. Lots of trees and stuff like that, but the cover on 1st of October, it stays on till 1st of February, that in February, put the solar blanket on, like you said, uh, to warm the water up, so we have an earlier season. And, uh, the solar blanket on a 16 by 20 pool, it's $110. Relatively easy to do, something I can do, you know, by myself, but the solar blanket you can put on 1st of February and then in September, October, you remove your solar blanket depending on, but it does cut down on water evaporation. You know, the requirement of any, you know, pool, it, it's not a huge expense to put a solar blanket on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, is, are there folks out there that would like to talk about golf courses? Okay. Are there folks out there that would like to talk about car washes?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Bobby Lou Allen. I'm the owner-operator of the three Auto Paradise car washes in town. And while I don't pretend to speak for everyone in the industry, we do have, um, other owner operators in the audience and we've been having discussions for the last week or 10 days of all the major car wash owners and operators in town. You would recognize all the names and, um, we would like to just have a quick discussion and provide you information so that you can make an informed decision. And, and what's great is that you don't have to figure it out alone. There are other cities, and Mr. Hirschfeld has named several, that are considered benchmarked cities on water conservation year-round. So we don't have to wait till stage three to take action. Yes, we do need to look at the ordinance, but we can benchmark San Antonio, who is considered one of the premier cities on conservation efforts. And all of the topics that y'all have been talking about, they have those addressed in their year-round water conservation, um, policy. So we would really like to partner with the city to provide a different, additional information. Our association is also available because they've been championing this program for more than 15 years throughout our state and have worked through with many city councils to come up with that comprehensive water conservation program. I provided each of you with a, a letter with some of their talking points that lists I provided each of you with a letter with some of their talking points that lists several of the cities that they've worked with to come up with that comprehensive plan. So there's no need to wait to address drought three. We can start today working on that. Now, a little bit about the car wash industry is, we are the people who are the most conservation-conscious. Not only us, but the very businesses that this ordinance targets are the ones that are out there trying to drive the conservation efforts in this city. Speaking personally, without any incentive or directive from the city, the state, or federal, I have taken actions to recapture and reuse my RO water. At my own expense, I've put in reclaim systems. You can talk to any one of the operators in this forum, and they could go through a list of items of where they're driving conservation efforts, where they're using more labor to do a task versus automated water systems that they used in the past, where they're using high-efficiency nozzles, where in the past they didn't. So they could list a whole bunch of efforts. Also, when you talk about data, Mr. Alexander was quoting a lot of data. The car wash industry and cities have confirmed that car washes use point-two percent of the daily city water supply, or annual, whichever time period you wanna look at, point-two percent. Just a bunch of us that own probably seventy percent of the car wash volume in this city, we looked at our usage, we doubled it, and we still couldn't get above point-five percent in our city. Now, we would welcome the city manager or whoever to go pull that data and challenge us on the impact. So what we're asking the city to do is to go after, to look at that ordinance, and let's partner and develop an ordinance that drives year-round conservation, that gets everyone involved, residents, commercial, year-round, so that we can, we can be effective in our water management without killing our local businesses. Because what's gonna happen is, the local businesses are the ones that are gonna go out of business, and when you turn the water back on, we will not open back up. Now, the larger corporations in town, they will survive. We will not. And that's pool owners, that's, you know, the local businesses, the locally-owned businesses are the ones that will not open when you turn the water back on. So we would love to partner. We think it's a serious issue. We are very active in water conservation already, and we appreciate you considering this.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Can I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
May I add to that?
Sure. Can I, I wanna ask him a question.
I do too.
Okay.
What percentage, what's your reuse, your reclaim?
It depends on which site, but my first two sites, I reclaim, reuse up to thirty percent of my water. At my new site, that's in Mr. Morrison's district, up by Walmart, it has a full reclaim system in use, and I use probably seventy percent less water than most car washes.
But you can't use all of it because of the chemicals in the water and the wax and the, I mean, so what is the...
You use it, you can reuse it all. The thing is, is you don't use reclaimed water for certain applications, like the final rinse, that's an RO rinse. So you can't use that, you can't reuse water for that application. But when you have a RO water maker, machine, that kicks off, and I think Mr. Willey talked about it in his Thursday conversation, it kicks off reject water. Well, we all capture that reject water and then pump it back into our washes. So that is fresh water, the RO water, that's a, you can't use reclaimed for that. Also, for most of our low-pressure soap applications, we don't use reclaimed water. But all the other high-pressure applications that you see are candidates for using reclaimed water. And the sad fact about water conservation is that I don't even advertise that, because people look at it negatively, you know, but you can't go through my wash and know that I'm using seventy percent reclaimed water. Because of quality of the wash and the whole wash experience, you can't tell the difference. But if I was to advertise that, it would have an economic impact to my business.
I think you just advertised it.
That is how, well, because I'm fighting for my livelihood.
Right, right.
When, when the ordinance, going after point-two percent of the water demand...
I understand you. Do be aware, and you saw what Mr. Willey said, and I'm not at all argumentative. I'm very appreciative of your approach, I'm very appreciative of your demeanor, all those things, but I do want you to be aware. The city, you were talking about conserving across the board and those things. You know, the city is doing that. The usage in the city has declined dramatically based on conservation measures over the last decade or fifteen years. And so I want, I don't want it to feel like we need to start, we can always improve.
Can I answer that?
Please.
If you took it that way, I did not mean it in that approach. What I meant was that, not, when I say the city, I'm talking about the greater San Angelo community.
Citizens, right.
Right, the whole, the citizen.
But they, but they are using, you know, twenty, what, fourteen thousand acre-feet a year versus twenty-eight thousand?
No, but I'm just saying, when you look at our ordinance, our ordinance is not as robust or brought up to, you know, recent...
I got you.
Okay, that's what I was trying to say.
Not a problem.
There's a lot of new things that have been implemented at other cities that are comprehensive.
One of the things that I just want us to be careful of, again, is that it's, is that we don't become boogeyman searchers. You know that it's the residences, or it's the businesses, or it's this person, or it's...
Well, it's a very complex...
But that it's an approach of, how do we make sure we do our very best to help you stay in business, okay?
It's very complex.
And at the same time, just kinda put pressure in all directions to make sure we conserve. That's all I'm after.
Can I follow up one more thing? I mean, first thing is that I brought up maybe limiting the times, 'cause I know that that was one of the things in San Antonio's proposal. And then also, what percentage roughly of the local car washes, commercial car washes, reuse water versus just using straight fresh?
I really hate to speak for everyone, but every car wash owner that I've talked to, they have conservation efforts, at least where they capture their RO reject, they have high-efficiency nozzles, et cetera. I don't know of one of us who don't, because we are so water-dependent.
But the reuse?
The older the unit, the less likely it has reuse, because they, because they can't reclaim because they don't have a tank.
I would, I would venture to say there are not very few, very many people who have full reclaim systems, because you have to do it when you build a site. It's really hard to go and do it after the fact.
Is there like a time period you can say probably every car wash built after nineteen eighty-five probably has this reclaim system?
I would not be...
No, okay, all right.
I would not know that.
Thank you.
Ms. Farmer?
I just wanted to add to what the gentleman was saying, is, you know, our own numbers. We need to pay close attention. Our own numbers, residential usage is sixty-two percent of our usage. Commercial is only eighteen percent, industry's four percent, and system operation is sixteen percent. Now, I don't know if car washes fall in the commercial or the industrial, but what that tells me, those numbers tell me, is the residential uses is the one that we really do need to concentrate, to educate on for conservation. Businesses are out there doing what they can to conserve by these numbers that we gave out Thursday night. And speaking of Thursday night, this water conservation tips, I personally think the city should go to the expense of mailing this to every household in San Angelo. It's part of education, and it needs to go. People need to understand. I would rather concentrate in adjusting, amending our ordinance to take this into consideration and move on.
Okay, Mr. Silvas?
And actually, Mr. Hirschfeld asked both questions that I had, but Mr. Lou Allen, on the, back to the recommendation, the water. I think Ms. Farmer said there was like a hundred and twenty car washes?
Well, if you count all of the bay washes that are here.
Are you talking about each individual stall, or?
No, businesses.
Hundred and twenty? I didn't realize...
Your HEBs, your, you know, all the different places. Now, it's not just a car wash. You know, you've got grocery stores that have car washes. You've got all kinds of little places that have car washes.
So then it's not fair to ask you if you knew how many of those are using your system?
I really don't. I just know the owner-operators that I interact with, and knowing the age of most of our facilities would be the only thing I could base that on.
Okay, that'll work, thank you.
Are there others that would like to talk about the car washes? Okay, that was good information. I have gone through pools, golf courses, car washes. The only other one is really the hand-watering of trees and foundations, which it already, we already can allow. All we have to do is vote and say, yes, you can, so I don't see any real reason to go through that, okay? Based on the fact that we really can't take action on the resolution today, and this is a discussion item only, I would suggest then that you, you look at this and that we then talk about it in future agenda items. Recognize also what he said, or what, what Ms. Bowling said earlier. The way the process works under our, under our ordinance, Mr. Willey would have to come to us after we have entered, that's the way she said it, come to us after we have entered drought stage level three conditions, okay? So if you look at the fact that you have a September nineteenth council meeting, and if we are not in that stage at that time, he would not be able to come to us. If, eighteenth, okay, if we have an eighteenth timeframe, if he comes in and we're not in stage level three, at that time, he can't introduce it then. So then the next time would be the first Tuesday in October, and he would, if we're in drought stage level three, he would introduce it then. Why I'm saying that is I think you have time on the eighteenth to make your first runs at what you think needs to be done here, okay? So you've got time to kinda think through what we've heard, and you can make your first runs at, here's what I think we need to do about this ordinance on the eighteenth. Then you could have a second reading and passage and those things on the very first time in October. So you have time now to make a run at, here's what I think we learned, here's what I think we ought to do, and all those kinds of things. And the business owners won't have it happen to them before those things have time to be done, based on when Mr. Willey would be bringing the action to you on drought stage level three.
In the most simple terms, it is not necessary to go run out and get an exemption right now. Tell your customers, hold on, if this doesn't come through and we don't vote in changes, there's still a chance to go do it later.
Okay, but so that, I think, then takes nineteen and puts it behind us until we make the first run at what kinds of changes for different groups you might want to bring up on the eighteenth, okay? All right, at this point then, I'm gonna move us to item number...
Sixteen?
Sixteen. Was it fifteen or sixteen?
Sixteen.
No, you see, we have no choice. We have to hit some of these budget things.
Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Okay, item number sixteen.
Item sixteen could be tabled if we needed to. It's the adoption of user fees for the landfill, I believe, and if we had to, we could postpone it. Seventeen and eighteen have to happen today.
We have a motion that we table that. There's a second that we table it. Is there any other input or argument with that from council? Let me go ahead and take a vote on the motion to table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item sixteen has been tabled. Item number seventeen? Yes, ma'am.
The adoption of today's budget ordinance would appropriate the funds for twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen fiscal year. It approves the pay schedule for city employees, including civil and non-civil service, and approves the budget amendment authorizations, and allows the city manager's office to apply for routine annual grants. That's in all the attachments in that ordinance. So we have a presentation ready for you today. However, we've been working with you and providing information, so unless there are any specific questions, you can give me direction if you'd like me to go into the presentation.
Okay, folks, what would you like? Mr. Morrison?
And I'm gonna make this in the form of a motion, but I'm gonna make it in the form of a motion that we add that forty-two thousand dollars back for the senior nutrition program, and that'd be part of our budget.
Second.
Thought it was forty-eight.
What is it, forty-two, forty-eight?
Forty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Okay, let me change that. Forty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars be added back into this budget so that we may continue the senior nutrition program.
Okay, Mr. Morrison, your motion is to approve the budget ordinance as presented?
No, that's not what I said. I just said, I want this, before we vote on the budget, I want this back in the budget, because we talked about it in our budget hearing.
That's the same thing, I appreciate it. My clarity, that's what I was seeking. I wondered if you were saying, I wanna vote for the whole thing with this added back, or whether you were saying, I just wanna add this?
No, I will wait to make a motion that approve the whole thing until I see the entire, until I know exactly what we're doing. But I want this portion of the budget back in the budget.
Got it. That's what I said, that's what I was after.
Is that your second?
That was my second. Okay, so right now, what he's, what he's trying to do is just reintroduce one item to the budget, the reduced recreation meal program, but he's not making a motion concerning the overall budget, okay? I'm looking at this, let me make sure I get this right. Second public hearing, consideration of the adoption of the ordinance. Should I really be taking that as a motion, or should I, should I be?
My only problem is, Mayor, is we had a budget meeting, and several of it I asked that it be put back in, it was not. And then last meeting, I asked it to be put back in, it was not.
Okay.
And as of right now, I do not, it is not in the budget, is it?
Okay.
That's correct.
Then I want it in the budget.
The motion...
Mr. Morrison?
I want it in there.
All right.
So would the motion be...
We just talked twice there.
The motion was made to cut the budget by an additional six hundred and sixty-three thousand, not to replenish this particular program. And we would need direction on, should this forty-four thousand come from the six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar surplus? Should we cut capital? What direction would this item be funded from?
That would be a budget that staff needs to figure out.
Here's what I'm after, sir, okay? I don't really think I should be taking a vote on each piece, but that I should not take a vote or accept a motion about all of it without getting that item dealt with. So what I'm trying to do is see what other items, maybe get one motion that includes these things have to be dealt with, and then a motion. Is that okay if I try to move us forward?
Just as long as this is not left out of the, out of the end product. Yeah, I don't care how we get there, just as long as we get there.
Well, I'm just reading what it says, and I don't, I don't think we're really supposed to be each piece motioning up or down. So I'm gonna try to get us to get a motion that hits the pieces.
Well, I'm gonna hold, I'm gonna pull mine until I get to that point then.
All right, keep an eye on me, and I'll be trying to help you, so, okay?
I'll pull my second.
All right, let's move forward then, but we have an interest in making sure that there's an amended motion, that we don't take things just as presented. What else? Are there other questions, or do we otherwise want to approve this?
I've got a question.
Okay.
Mr. Dane, I had brought up a topic on item number three-ten, the city health, where it appears that we have cut the budget by over a million dollars.
Yes, sir. We're prepared to go over that with you.
Sure, I have a brief overview, and if you have specific questions, I believe Lisa Marley is also on hand to speak to that.
To clarify, we received a question from Councilman Hirschfeld that said that the information he received made it appear as if we were cutting expenditures in the self-insurance fund, the health, the health insurance fund, by a million dollars. And so we followed up on that, and we are prepared to deal with that today, or to bring you some information today.
In short, yes, we did decrease the budget by a million dollars. The twenty-twelve original budget, which I believe you're looking at last year's ordinance, adopted eight million dollars in revenue and eight million dollars in expense. After the budget was adopted, there were changes made to the plan. There were adjustments made to what is covered in the health insurance plan, and as such, there was a mid-year budget amendment done to reduce revenue and reduce expenses by almost one-point-one million dollars. So the twenty-twelve revised revenue budget is six million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's what's on the books right now for the health insurance fund.
Down from our budget of this current fiscal year, we're ending of eight million.
The current fiscal year is ending at six million, nine hundred and fifty thousand.
I think that's what's critical, is we started with...
I say the answer to your question is yes. Here's what I think she just said, and let's just, you tell me if this is what you said, okay? But here's what, I think she said, it was September of last year, we budgeted eight million, forty, fifty thousand dollars in revenue and expenses. Then, because it's a calendar year plan, we go through a bunch of stuff that puts, makes changes to the medical insurance and so forth. And so then, by the time we actually adopted a plan, we didn't really need eight million and fifty thousand dollars, but we, but the time for making budget votes had already passed. So September, you pass eight million and fifty thousand, between then and January the first, you realize your plan changes are actually gonna cost you less than that. So then she said in May, we made a revised, we revised the budget with a vote that took that number from eight million and fifty thousand down to six million, nine hundred and fifty thousand. But, so we made an adjustment there of one-point-one million, but that was because of, again, best you knew, and in September, it was gonna cost eight million. Then you go through the process, getting ready for January, decide you're actually not gonna spend that, and you made a budget change of one-point-one million. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It wasn't done in May, but yes, sometime mid-year during the year, yes. That is all. The rest of that is correct. So to compare the twenty-twelve, sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. I was just gonna point out that you remember that we kinda danced, had a little victory dance after we went through all that insurance business last year, because the costs had come down, and this is where that is reflected.
So that eight million, you just over-budgeted, or you were just looking at a higher number?
With, with lack of better data, of knowing what adjustments were being made to the plan.
You didn't know yet what you were gonna get, right? So you're just, you're just guestimating. But then you got the actual plan put in place. Now, this is saying you really did spend a lot less money based on the new actual plan. And then, and then... And then, and then what they're saying is, we think we can hold that flat or even reduce it by $50,000 for the next year based on what we think the plan's going to do.
So you just loaned your projections.
So, yeah, so what she's saying is the change from 2012 to 2013 is reduced by 50,000. So they're saying in the budget we're approving, they're doing something flat for next year with what actually happened this year.
Due to innovative solutions and efficiencies.
Okay, okay. So that's what she's saying.
All right, good.
Thank you. Sounds good.
I guess at some point, and maybe we knew this, but the, where did that one million go?
We reduced revenue and reduced expense, so the budget still balances.
Okay, so that...
At six million, nine hundred and fifty thousand in revenue.
We didn't, our revenue projection for this current fiscal year is a million dollars less.
Correct.
And that's, okay, all right, I got you, all right.
Credit and a debit. You're just washing it out.
Washing it out.
I'm okay.
You didn't stick the million somewhere else.
Next item.
That's what I was...
Hidden fund or something.
Next item, Mr. Dane.
I do have a question. You talked about the pay plan was included in here, but we haven't decided yet how to give raises. And we had planned on bringing that back at the next council meeting to decide what methodology we would use for us, for assigning that money we've set aside. We, I assume that if we adopt as presented, we will still be able to come back and discuss our methodology, our strategy for handing out that raise money.
Absolutely. Thanks for bringing that up. The pay plan, the grades don't necessarily change. If you give me a 3% raise, I'm still a grade nineteen or whatever it is. So the pay grades are what you're approving here.
So upon approval of this item, we should not, as employees, assume that what is in here is going to be how the raises are going to be given. We're still going to discuss that at a future council meeting.
Okay. Other questions on this?
So you're just adjusting, adjusting the grades, the pay grades?
We're not adjusting the grades.
No, you're not. All you're doing is agreeing that you're going to spend $550,000. And what you're doing is agreeing that you're going to spend 300 and something on meet and confer. And then later, you'll decide how you're going to spend the $550,000, okay?
Okay.
That's what she's saying. Okay? Other thoughts on this? Okay, Mr. Morrison, would you make a motion with one change maybe toward this thing?
That we adopt this budget as presented with the amended, with the amendment that we put the $44,633...
Thirty-three dollars.
Back into the recreational senior nutritional meal program.
Okay. I have a, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Adams with the second. Are there other questions on this from the council?
I have a comment.
Ms. Farmer?
I'm all for putting the meals back in. That's what I'd wanted from the time we were having workshops that I wanted in, but I'm not going to vote to approve the budget. You know, I, for several years, I have right here, things provided in the budget drafts, real simple, by department. This, this, this is real simple to read and understand and been provided. That's all I've asked for this year and I'm just not happy with the response that I get from the budget folks when they say, okay, you want it, we'll give it to you and they provide me this. The whole blooming thing to look through whenever you folks are on salary, you get paid and I expect to get the summation sheets that simple, takes a little time, but it is detailed. And I, I want line item spending and budgeting. I'm just not comfortable with it and I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay. And you've got a very good point there. You've got an excellent point and maybe we need to just hold this thing off for another meeting until we get what we've asked for.
Well, and I want to say, I'm, I'm with Charlotte on this thing too. I'm not real, real pleased with how this whole budget thing has turned out. I'm not going to be voting for this either. I mean, and, and my answer would be if we have to approve a budget today, that we approved the budget for last year's numbers and then we figure it out over the course of the next 60 to 90 days.
Okay.
And that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Ms. Trainer, what's the total amount on this budget?
It's about 130 million, all funds.
I'm asking about the general fund.
Fifty-four and a half million in expenses and about 3.9 million in transfers out.
And what was that last year?
Well, out of fairness though, I mean, for the moment, let me go ahead and keep them on.
I'm sorry.
Okay. What I'm thinking on this is that we gave them guidance at the last council meeting to get to 54 and a half million dollars. And then we made a big presentation of the fact that we didn't want to have to do that on an item-by-item basis, that we pay them to do that. So if they've brought us a 54 and a half million dollar budget, I mean, we, somewhere in here, we can't have it both ways. That's all I'm trying to say. That if you tell them it's 54 and a half million, bring me something. Now, you made a small change and I'm okay with that. But if we start kind of walking them through each different item again, then I feel like we're giving them mixed signals and that's not fair. Somewhere in here, you can't say, give me a 54 and a half million dollar budget and I pay you to figure out where to cut this or cut that. And on the other hand, I mean, in other words, we need to be clear that what, what do we want?
Well, my problem, my problem is this, and it goes right along with what Charlotte said. When we had our budget meeting, we asked if this be put back in. There were several of us that said, we don't want this dropped. And then last meeting, I brought it up again and I said, I don't want this dropped. Charlotte said, I don't want it dropped either. There was a consensus, but it's never been put back in. So we give direction and the direction is not followed and now we end up with this.
Okay. So, but I guess my point being that it seems like that, that we're, we're at the 54 and a half million dollars we gave them and we have made the change that you're concerned with in your motion.
Not just, well, in my motion, but it's not been voted on yet.
And it's seconded. So it seems like to me, we ought to be able to push this through and, and have the budget done, have the rate done and, and move forward.
Well, then I'll maintain my motion. I retain my motion and we'll vote on it. If it fails, then we'll go to stage, to stage two, but my motion stands. Does your second stand?
Yes.
Okay, then we vote and then we'll...
No, it's Mr. Adams. It's Mr. Adams. Your second was, was withdrawn. It was Mr. Morrison, the second time he made a motion.
Mr. Adams seconded it.
Okay, well, as long as I've got a second, I, I'd like a vote on that.
Okay.
Yes, my second stands.
Okay. Further comments from council?
Just further comment, you know, other than the other things that were mentioned, you know, from the very beginning, from April, I have been asking for a car allowance report. Not gotten it, wasn't emailed. I have stated so in council meetings. I still hadn't gotten it. I managed to get it this morning.
You got it.
What irritates me is when we say, okay, this is going to be our budget, you go find some cuts, or budget committee finds some cuts. The cuts, always the people are the ones that are penalized or suffer. You know, take the meals away from the elderly, but let's continue giving car allowances. You know, car allowance report, the effective date, in '05, we complained and we said we want it cut each year, cut. It hasn't been cut. Yes, some people have moved on and gone on, but we have added more car allowances since '05. I mean, we never look at cutting inside with the employees. It's always the citizens. And I think we forget that it's the citizens who pay our salaries.
Great, okay. Other questions or comments from council? Public input on this item? Okay. Let me then call for this vote, okay? All those in favor of the motion, which is to accept this 54 and a half million dollar budget as presented with the exception of reinstating the $44,633 for the senior meals program, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Aye. Four. Nay.
Nay.
Three. Okay. So you have Mr. Alexander, Mr. Morrison, Mr. Adams, Mr. New on the ayes. You have Mr. Silvas, Mr. Hirschfeld, Ms. Farmer on the nays, okay?
But I think this gives, I think this gives staff a very good idea of where we need to go and I don't think anybody up here is happy with this budget process. This is, this has been, it's not been good. So by a four-three vote on this budget, and I've never seen a budget that wasn't a seven-o vote, y'all got some problems and they need to be taken care of. And really, I think staff needs to start listening to us and you're not listening. There's my two cents word.
Okay. Let's move forward. Thank you. Let's go to item number 18. This is the first public hearing and introduction of an ordinance levying property taxes for the city of San Angelo for the 2012, 2013 budget year. The, the budget as they have presented it includes a half cent decrease in the rate from 78.6 cents to 78.1 cent. And, and so I, is this one that has to have really specific language in, in the way it's stated, so the motion? Because it seems like to me that it is, so I'm trying to make sure I give you what you want.
You're doing well. Some of the specific language that you might be referring to is under the statute, but since it's a decrease...
Okay.
It's treated differently.
Okay. Well, at this time, let's, let me seek a motion for the decrease of a half cent and a stated 78.1 cent per $100 valuation property tax rate for the upcoming...
What you just said, put my name on it.
Mr. Morrison's motion, Mr. Alexander's second.
Sure.
Okay. And is there any further discussion from council on this item? Is there any public input? Call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. The only thing that was tabled, I'm sorry, folks, the thing that was tabled was item number 16. And so for now, let's go into executive session and then we'll, we'll handle other items after the executive session. Is that correct, folks? Even in today's environment or special circumstance with interviews and what have you, will we be coming back before we start the interviews or?
I don't think so.
Can I do the executive session here in this room?
Where's the executive session planned to be? Here?
Is, would somebody please get Lisa? This is her executive session.
The room is set up upstairs for executive session, if that helps.
Okay. Okay. Okay, at this time, I'm going to move us into executive session under the provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to the Requirement That Meetings Be Open, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, to Interview Candidates For The City Manager Position. And then we'll come back and, and handle things here. We, I want to bring us back out of executive session and call the meeting to order. And, and so what, we don't have anything to discuss from the executive session at this point, but thank you. And it is 4:55. What I'd like to do is move on to item number 21, and this is announcements and consideration of future agenda items. And so we, we had one item today that got tabled, so for sure, it will be moving to the next agenda. I believe it was item number 16?
That's what I show also, ma'am.
Okay. And beyond item number 16, the other things would be further information you wanted to talk some about, which maybe it was in 16, I'm sorry, but some of the pay issues or something that you wanted to go through.
Yes, sir. We will bring back some alternatives for council with regard to how we hand out pay increases this year. There's been some research done and some opinion expressed by council and we'll try to mold those into a solution and, and move forward, so we've got something to move forward with. Also, I took some notes on the conservation ordinance and we will bring back an ordinance, we will introduce an ordinance at the next meeting that contains those items that were discussed, pools, car washes, that kind of thing. And we'll introduce, and we'll try to get as close as what we heard today. I think on introduction, you can amend an ordinance a little bit and not get into too much trouble, but we'll try to hit the mark as close as we can and then we'll amend as necessary at the meeting, depending on how the discussion goes, so that we can introduce if that's council's pleasure.
I think that's definitely what you heard today, okay? Okay, and also, if you can, the downtown development commission update, because it's been bumped a couple of times.
Right.
Okay? So if you can do something to tell us where that process is and what's going on.
Absolutely. We've got good news there. Also, we will, the presentation on the Tri-Cities effort that we missed here a meeting or two ago, we will try to get that back on for executive session.
Very good. Okay, folks, I need to announce that there is a meet and greet the city manager candidates at 6 o'clock. We'll need to kind of separate and walk them around. So please take a look, the materials that Lisa Marley handed out to us gave you a clear indication of the, of the schedule. So take a look at that and please be sure we don't all congregate in one room or something of that nature that we're spread out and doing our job as, as hosts, okay? And then the...
Six o'clock.
It's at six o'clock and it is here. And then we have a, the announcement for the public and for ourselves, but for the public, that there is a special city council meeting tomorrow morning, Wednesday, September the 5th, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. And so that will be kicked off as a meeting, a special meeting, and then we'll go into executive session immediately and start more interviews, okay? So I'll see you in the morning.
I do have an item that was brought to my attention. We had an incident earlier today where there's a gentleman who was carrying a concealed handgun. We have no posting, we have nothing in the front, on the, the front door of whether they're allowed or not allowed. So that's something we need to look into, whether, you know, registered handgun person is allowed to walk in here with a gun, so.
Okay. And at that point then, can we move into a motion for adjournment?
So move, second.
Okay, I've got a motion for Mr. Adams, a second from Mr. Morrison to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Big element hour.
Okay. The time is 5:06. We have come out of executive session where we, where we were in talks and consideration of matters discussed, of course, in, in executive session. We've been, over the past couple of days, interviewing five candidates and for our new city manager, manager's position and it was a learning experience for all of us and I think we all did well. Came out with flying colors, I believe. So I am just going to open us up, open us up into open session and ask for a motion to proceed with what we discussed.
Mayor Protem. After a significant consideration and meeting with all of the applicants and viewing their qualifications, I would like to make a motion today that we accept Mr. Daniel Venezuela as our new city manager.
I will second.
Any discussions from anyone?
Yes, I'd like to make mention that our mayor, Al Van New, was involved in all of the discussions and agrees. He's, he's with us, all of us are on board, so I wanted to add that.
Yes, we did have a unanimous vote on Mr. Valenzuela and also, am I supposed to ask for public comment or anything or not?
Not with executive. Not with executive.
Okay.
Just wanted to add that Mayor New left just a little while ago a prior family commitment, or he would proudly be here today.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead.
And may I just clarify, it was not a unanimous vote, yet.
Yet.
We just spoke in executive session and reviewed the candidates, and we have decided that this would be a good person...
That's exactly right.
If we could get a vote.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Well, we do have a motion and a second, so I will call for the vote. All in favor of Mr. Valenzuela as our new city manager, signified by saying...
Aye.
Aye.
And anyone against? All right. Having no, no one against, aye, the motion stands. Mr. Valenzuela, welcome.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, would, would Mr. Valenzuela like to address the council before we adjourn?
Please feel free to come up and share a few words with us.
Mayor Protem, council members, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for the trust that you've placed in me. I will work very diligently to make sure that we accomplish all the projects that we spoke about in, in the interview. I feel very humbled, very blessed to be given this opportunity, and again, I thank you wholeheartedly. My family thanks you also. We're looking forward to making the move actually back to West Texas, and again, our sincerest gratitude.
How long is it going to take you, Daniel, to get down here and be working?
30 days. I know that we have, we have plenty of work to do, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Welcome to San Angelo.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. We are adjourned.
All those in favor.
All those in favor, all those.
All those in favor of adjourn.
Aye.
You going to ask anybody to oppose?
Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
We've got one opposition, Ms....